So, this is the Virginian High School Regular Board Meeting for Monday, November 11th. And I'd like to remind people at the table that the mics are on and they are very sensitive. So if you do have side conversations, they will be recorded. So, please be aware of that.
Papers.
Yeah, papers, too. So, I'd like to take, get, or entertain a motion for approval of the regular meetings, minutes from October 28th.
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Any discussion? Addenda? No? Okay. There being no more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. And then, a motion, please, for the special meeting on November 4th. Meeting minutes?
Also, so moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Any additional discussion, or addenda, or cor denda?
Yeah, it would be maybe helpful to just include the verbiage, the actual words that we decided on, on the warning, to include with the minutes, since the minutes specifically talk about some edits. So when they're finalized and put up online.
So, I'm looking at the minutes right now, Neil, and it sounds like you'd like more detail after the sentence where it says, Neil, and Cayman asked about including the refinancing of the roof in the verbiage.
No, actually, I just think that we should, because the purpose of the special meeting was to adopt the warning, for folks who may be interested in seeing what the warning says, we should have the warning as part of the minutes.
Okay.
The product of the meeting.
Does it matter to you where it's put? Where in the minute?
No, no, not at all. I mean, just tack it to the back, or whatever. Put it online. It'll be out there shortly enough.
It's already out there.
Yeah.
Yep. So I just add them to the minutes after the motion was made by Jay Glassberg. So voted motion carried with the amendments, so that we know what was accepted. With that amendment, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstentions? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the educational presentation.
Right, I assume I'll try to do that.
So we're changing the order?
Yeah, Rebecca's gonna, Rebecca's gonna go. And I'll try to do this.
So this is the modern citizenship course proposal?
Right. I'm Rebecca Coffey. I met you all in the spring. And you approved the required course of modern citizenship to our social studies requirements. So we have world cultures, US history, and now, modern citizenship. I included in your packets, or in the meeting minutes that Glory sent you, the outlines of the four proposed units for the course. And I had some visuals, just to keep me on track, so if you don't mind, I'll put those up. So, we worked hard at the beginning of, at the beginning of the summer vacation, right after we finished school, the four department members got together and we mapped out our curriculum. This was the first time my department had ever sat down and drafted a curriculum together, so that we had consensus mapping and had agreement on what we would all teach, because we don't know who would be teaching it next year. So, it was a great experience for me and for my three other colleagues. It was intense. It was, we had great discussions. We really got to the heart of what we felt like it was to be a modern citizen, looking at economics and civics. So, so this is the course description, and it just really outlines the idea of what it means to be an American citizen in a global community. We want to balance the idea of localization versus globalization. We want to look at what it means to have freedoms, and what it means to have those freedoms, and what it takes to keep those freedoms. So we'll be looking at local, state, national, and global policies and laws. We'll be looking at different economic systems. Oops, I can't go backwards. So I wanted to just go through, let me, can't see, I'll go back. So what we did in June was, as I said, we did some consensus mapping, where we all agreed. So we used the Rubicon Atlas software that helps us map out our curriculum, that the district is going, is using. So for each unit, we agreed on the following: Common Core reading and writing, social study standards. We also agreed that, and that's the reason we started this, was to go with PBGR number two. It's really to support that performance-based graduation requirement. And as you can see, it says, "I'm an active and contributing member of my local, state, national, and global communities, in which I'm working to develop a multifaceted understanding of myself, of others, and of the natural world." So, using that PBGR standard, we decide, that's what we wrapped our whole curriculum around. We also looked at enduring understandings and essential questions that every student should understand before leaving the course. And then each unit has a common performance assessment. It will be this, we will, each teacher who teaches it will use that same assessment. Then we broke apart, and we did some work with suggested reading lists that could occur, and also, a GRAS form, which is our Understanding by Design template, on how to do those performance assessments.
What is GRAS?
Oh, Mr. Webly, it, there's a whole list of, like, prompts that you go through to make sure that you understand the task that's being handed to you, and it's performance-based. It makes you look at audience, your role, the purpose, and I forget what G is. I don't know. But, that's what we worked on at this point, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. But, it helps us understand more fully the task and what is, what is needed to complete it, and it helps the learner understand, too, which, what they need to do to complete the task. So, the units of studies, the first one is political and economic systems in today's world, and I gave the list of the five essential questions that we came up with, such as, how is political power divided and controlled in modern societies? How do political and economic systems work together? They are big questions, so that we can enter, enter each question from a different angle, look at it in different ways, and use our own teaching strategies and style to really get to the heart of these questions, and allow the students to identify what they believe is essential to participating in political and economic systems. The performance assessment, in this case, is a constitutional Congress. The next one, I'm not gonna read them all. You have the curriculum, I handed out what, or it was emailed to you, what we have worked on. Participating in government. What are the different roles that we can take as citizens? And, because we can vote, but what else can we do? How else are we participatory? So that's the things that we really got into and started addressing. We also thought that globalization versus localization is a huge component to our lives. Here in Vermont, we are always thinking about local, and how do we support the local economy, sustainable agriculture, those sorts of things. But it's also, we have to understand how that impacts our global community also. So, there's this balance that we talked about in this unit, about what does it mean, globalization versus localization. And during this performance assessment that we came up with, we were gonna trace a product, or a company, from the local impact to the global impact, just to show that it does, it's interchangeable. It goes back and forth. And the last one was liberty and justice. And this is the, it's a little more philosophical at times, but I think it's at the heart of being a citizen of the United States. What is the right thing to do? Who decides what is right or fair? What are basic human rights? And, it's hard. We want each student to understand that they need to think about these hard issues, and make stance, take a stance on a topic, and really understand what their stance means. And so, we want them to come away with a core understanding of who they are, and how that impacts others. So what we still need to do, we haven't finished our work for next fall, by any means. We really want to establish some contacts with local organizations, councils, and businesses. We want students to sit in on meetings like this, and understand how school boards work, how city council works, how these things interplay with each other. We still need to write out individual lesson plans, decide what texts and primary sources to use, develop some common assessment rubrics, because we have the common assessments, but we aren't sure how to assess them yet, so that's big work that needs to be done, and agree on common grading practices. So, that's where we're at. The whole department's excited. We're all, like, hoping we get to teach it next fall, but we'll see how the scheduling works out at that point. Yeah, Neil?
Awesome. It's great. It looks really, really cool. And I'm curious, when does it start? Are ninth graders this year required, or is it ninth graders next year?
No, it'll be ninth graders next year, that'll come in with, but we'll be offering it up as an elective for juniors and seniors. I was talking about it with my humanities class, which are upper-level, 11th and 12th grade students, and they were so excited. They're like, "We're graduating, we can't take this," because they really want to have that knowledge base, that they feel like it's a little bit lacking at this moment.
Would you foresee having to select, say, a younger student over an older student who wants to take the class? Just in, in terms of, like, how much capacity there is? Because I can see this having some pull, you know?
I'm not sure. I mean, scheduling, scheduling, like, software kinda helps us out with this. But we try to place as many students as possible, and we're looking to make as many classes of this as possible next year and the year after, just to get it in motion and moving and seeing the kinks. If you have further questions after reviewing the materials, feel free to email me. If you have suggestions, or ideas, or contacts that you think would be valuable, I would really appreciate those, too, because I've got a lot of legwork to do in regards to making contacts. Yeah, Mr. Webly?
Grasp is real-world goal, is the first one.
That's what it is.
And real-world role, and real-world audience, real-world situation, real-world products or performances, and real-world standards, so.
Thank you. I got a couple of.
I just couldn't, yeah.
Couldn't think of the G.
Wasn't quick enough without my little friend here.
Thanks.
Yeah, because Google says it's general responsibility assignment software patterns.
Yeah, that's not.
I don't think so.
Yeah. I would stay away from that one.
Great.
So, yeah, so again, please, if you have questions, comments, I would love, and my department would love to hear them.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Just in between that, and Ed, you're speaking, some other people came in. Did you all sign in, so we know who's here?
No.
So could we take a minute, for those of you who came a little bit late?
Do you have more agendas?
Uh, no.
I have 15 copies made.
Yep.
Could we put it up there, before she shuts down?
Go ahead, Ed.
Okay. Christine Gercali apologizes for not being able to make it today. She's the chair of the PBGR group. That's performance-based graduation requirements, and we're moving away from Carnegie units, and toward proving that we can do real-world tasks. And we're, we're about eight years, seven years into this, and we've built the system pretty well, and we've started the freshmen, the sophomores are going to be the first two classes that are gonna graduate under the ages of the PBGRs. And they're gonna have four, they're gonna graduate four out of nine PBGRs accomplished. And this is an idea that came out of the PBGR group, and again, I'm filling in for Christine, so I'm probably not gonna have all the details. But basically, what they're proposing is a PBGR class, or course, in which kids who have decided on their major project are going to be able to get help from a PBGR coach, one of the teachers. And so, a lot of times, what we've seen in other schools that are doing this kind of initiative, is kids run out of time. They're a junior or first semester senior, they're going, "When am I gonna pack all this in? I'm taking AP Calc, I'm taking this, and, you know, I'm interning at a vet, you know, and when am I gonna have time to produce my PBGR?", which is going to be a major project. And I always use as an example, the young man we had out in Ferrisburg who was sugaring. And he was, he's turning a profit. He was custom bottling, and he went and got a new evaporator, he reinvested his profits, and we couldn't give him any academic credit for it. And I always thought that was interesting, that here's a kid who's actually got a working business plan, and is making money in the real world, and we weren't able to support him. So, let's say a person is doing a long-term project on perhaps the efficacy of growing rice, out here at the only rice paddy I know in Vermont, right out the road here, and does all the research on, on markets, and market advantage because of the locality, and being able to get to natural foods, and having a preferred market, and all that stuff. But it takes a long time to put together, and it takes a lot of field trip, and a lot of legwork. And so this would be a course in which a kid could actually instead, think of it as a super-space-age study hall, that's dedicated to one thing and one thing only, and that's getting their PBGR done, with some intensive coaching on the part of the faculty. And, so, it's a one semester class, there's no prerequisites, except they have to be graduating under the PBGR umbrella. They need to be able to write a personal learning plan and contract, I think it's a little bit more than that. Design an independent learning project, complete an independent learning project. Document their independent learning, successfully and accurately place evidences of learning in their PBGR e-portfolios, which are already in existence. We have electronic portfolios for them through Google. Reflect on their learning, prepare for the presentation of their portfolio to an audience, to a jury of community members, and faculty, and parents, and defend the choices made of the work or work selected. And the only real material we'll need is a good internet connection, we have plenty of those. So there, Christine wanted to run it by the board. Perhaps, my feeling is, after reading this, and not having Christine here, that we should probably wait another meeting before we really have a, a conversation of any substance.
I agree.
But she wanted you to hear that, and she apologized, she had a, she's been with her ill father-in-law all day, so.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ed. Any other questions for Ed on PBGRs? Hi, Jay.
Just wanted to keep in mind that we're putting together a guidance for all the courses next year, and that's something that goes to the printer in December. So, I mean, obviously, it's important to have Christine here to get all those questions answered, but just sort of more aware of that, so there's a bit of a timeframe. We start registering students in January for next year, that sort of stuff. So if we're gonna make it available to them, it needs to be decided sooner rather than later.
So is it a required course?
No. It's an elective.
But if we're gonna make it available to them.
Right, no, understood. That was part of the.
Right.
So do you have a recommendation there, Jay? That we not wait, or we wait, or?
I don't know if we have all, I don't have any more information than Ed has.
Okay.
If you can do anything else. I'm, I'm just pointing that out, so that, you know, we don't run into a situation where we can't offer it next year, and then we've gotta wait another year to, to do it, so. I don't know.
Do you see any problem with waiting?
I don't, I, I think we can circumvent that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any, anything else on PBGRs? So, next part of the agenda, and I'm sorry, we don't have any more agendas. Usually, 15, we throw five away, so.
Do you want me to go make some more copies?
Someone, someone did ask for one, yeah, so.
Just the front page, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So everything else is done.
But the next item on the agenda is public communication, and for those of you who've been here before, I'd like to continue with, you know, raising your hand, and being called on, and this is the time for you to make any comments that you'd like. And, you know, if you have questions that you'd like us to answer, or if you could give those to us in writing, we'd be glad to, to respond to them. Hi.
Cheryl Ewen.
Hi, Cheryl.
And my questions from last week.
Yeah.
You have to put in writing.
Yeah.
And has that been done?
Yeah, I have answers to them, and we're gonna make them public.
Okay. So when will that be?
As soon as I get them on the website.
When you say "public"?
What's that?
How do I access them publicly?
On VUHS.org.
This, over here?
No, it's the high school website.
The high school website.
Yep.
And, and under, because I've been on that website, and, so what category do I look under?
I'll, I'll, if you'd like me to send you an email, I'd be glad to.
Well, I just want other people to be able to see it as well.
Yeah. I'll try to make it as, as obvious as possible.
Okay.
I just got the answers today.
Okay.
And I wanted to edit them and make sure that, you know, they represented the board's stance, and, so we'll put them up there.
Okay.
That's why I, I was asking if you minded if we made them public. I'd like to.
No, that's fine.
Make questions.
Sure, I'd access that.
As public as possible, so that, you know, if, if we are answering questions that other people have, you know, it's good to have the answers in one place. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great. Hi.
Good.
David.
During the budget discussion, is it gonna be interactive, or you're just gonna tell us, you're gonna read it to us, or how, are we gonna be able to interface and ask questions then, or do we need to ask them now, or?
I don't usually ask for any kind of questions, but, you know, if you have questions, have you reviewed the budget, or?
Well, yeah. Some of my questions kinda go back to other things that I alluded to before, and that was primarily within the, within the bond proposal, which is a function of the budget, I think.
Not really.
Well, it's gonna, well.
It'll impact the budget, yeah.
Huh?
Yes, it will impact the budget.
Yeah, will impact the budget.
Mm-hmm.
My, my question is, is there any funds being allocated in the bond, primarily site work, HVACO controls, and other heating and ventilation condition, construction that is kinda listed but not broken out? Is any of that in there that is intended to support some future energy efficiency activities?
Yeah, I can't answer that. So if you'd like to write down your question, and leave it for me, I'll try to get an answer for you.
Can I just add a little bit to that?
Yeah.
I think it's important, David, when we have the meeting about the bond, we'll have, like, the whole spreadsheets out, so we can talk about each and every element of it, and we can talk about that.
Is that tonight?
No, that's the public meeting to, that would be one week before the vote, so that meeting is scheduled for December 3rd.
Okay.
And, one thing I think is, the answer I think you're looking for, and an answer that I wanna just provide for everybody else, is there's nothing we're doing in there that would preclude us from being able to take advantage of gas if it comes, or pellet if we so choose. We basically, because of those decisions not being made yet at the state level, we're holding back, but we're not investing in anything that requires us to stick to a certain energy portfolio.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so.
Comment along those lines.
So just, if, if you'd like a, you know, an answer to that question, you know, I'm trying to make the information that we pass amongst us as permanent as possible, so it's not just a conversation we have. You know, we are recording it, but not everyone goes and watches the recording, so, you know, just make sure that if you, if you want something, if you want us to answer something in it to be, you know, in writing, I think that's an important thing, because, you know, that way everybody prospers from the questions.
Yeah, I, I can do that, but, you know, I know we've talked about, or there's been discussion about significant savings that's available to us, and I think we need to be hopping on that as soon as we can. You know, and the gentleman talked about booking savings, and we should know what, what we need to do to start achieving some of that, you know? And do the analysis on what's the best way to do it.
We're actively working on that.
Okay, good.
That's research that Kathy is doing for us, with people who know how this stuff is done, so.
Okay, good.
But, but no, no conclusions have been, you know, made.
Okay.
None of the, none of the bond, you know, getting back to your original question, none of the bond has any conclusion to the investigation or research that we've done.
There was one thing I, I heard, and maybe you can explain it to me, is that if we have a, as, as a school district, we have a $13,000 per student expense, and if we, for some reason, lose one student, so now we have, well, if that number does not go down next year, then our taxes go up. Does that make sense?
I really wish you would write the questions down, because.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm sorry, I apologize.
You know, the question you just asked has, has an answer that's probably pages long. So, you know, losing one student and $13,000 per student, those are all numbers that we really shouldn't throw around.
Okay, all right. I apologize.
You know, losing one, losing one student doesn't necessarily affect your budget by $13,000, is what I'm trying to say. And I don't want that, I don't want people to feel that, you know, if we lose 100 students.
I just don't understand how it works, and I was wondering if someone.
Yeah, and this really isn't the place for us.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, thanks.
Although it's, it's interesting reading, I can point you towards the, the formula. Any other? Hi.
Hey.
Chris.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I saw Christina.
I have just a quick question. I understand that the Northwest Supervisory Board, when they met last month, I think in September, they decided to move forward to hire, or to advertise for a new superintendent? And I just was wondering, the board members that are on that board that are here tonight, when that process might start?
Christina, we met last, what night was it? Tuesday? Tuesday night? The board chairs met last Tuesday, last Tuesday night with Bob Stevens. Bob Stevens and Bill Miles. And they're consultants that, and we haven't entered into contract with them, we just met with them to talk about how the process works. And then, next Wednesday night, November 20th, we, the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union Board meets, to meet with all the board members, to talk about what we met with those two men, those two, those two individuals. And then, then we'll decide to go from there.
And they're consultants on, like, how to hire a superintendent, basically?
Yeah, right.
Great.
Okay.
So just, it was the board chairs that met, but the board, the chair of this board, there wasn't one, so Jeff was assigned to that, that task. So, I was elected after Jeff was assigned, so we're gonna stay with Jeff, and I'm comfortable with that, huh?
But, but Christina, you should understand that those, those people that were at the meeting, the board chairs, they're not the people that.
For that meeting, is what I was about to say.
They're not the people that will be on the screening committee.
Okay.
So there's, there's a whole list of people that will be on the screening committee, but we have to decide amongst the whole Supervisory Union Board if they're okay with what, what we talked about. if they're okay with what, what we talked about as being the members of the screening committee. So, for example, you know, it would be two, two community members, two board members, a administrator, someone from the central office, a support staff person, so, you know, there'd be probably nine people that would be on the screening committee, but comprised of people from, you know, all different, you know, places.
Will a student or two be possibly on that?
Um, no.
No?
No. I, I don't think that-
I think that the students were too removed from the situation to really be of value on that, or at least the consultants did, so...
'Cause a lot of, a lot of students, you know, really don't understand, and I think Rebecca's class would really be helpful to make them be able to understand what a superintendent, you know, what their job is.
Yeah.
So, it's, 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 it is what, you know, Michelle just said, it's really kind of a person that they don't have much to do with, and know that, what they, that person really does.
So, at next Wednesday's meeting, you'll decide when and how to basically start advertising?
Yep, right.
And just so, there's no misunderstanding here, what I said about Jeff being on that, that group was for that meeting, so, not, not moving forward. So, there's no understand, misunderstanding there. All right? Okay. Any other public communications? Hi, Carol.
Hey. Um, now, did I hear right about commenting during other agenda items we're welcome to?
No, I didn't say that.
No, we're not?
I'd, I'd rather you not.
Okay.
Public com, make public comments during other agenda items.
Okay, so, um, I'd like you to, um, you know, look up Title 1, Section 312. At an open meeting, the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to express its opinion on matters considered by the body during the meeting, as long as, um, as long as order is maintained. Public comments shall be subject to reasonable rules established by the cheerful person. So, you're saying your reasonable rules, since we cannot speak?
Uh, tonight, I'd, I'd rather get the meeting done, without any comments. That's, that's what I'm asking for, yes.
Will you check on this law?
Uh, if you submit the question to me in writing, I'd be glad to, to take a look at it. But I, I didn't write down what law it is, and I don't know the law book by heart, so...
Carol, I think what Kurt is saying is that if you have something you wanna bring up as public comment, now's the time to do it. You're not being excluded from the possibility, or, you know, permission to do that. Obviously, we know what that particular statute says. What Kurt's trying to do is, is drive an efficient meeting, so if there's things that are on your mind, now's the time.
Um, you had, um, created a policy-
Would you like me to make any response to what you just asked me to do, or?
Well, you just pretty much told us to be quiet, so...
No, I'm not saying to be quiet.
Well, other than public comment.
Yeah, and you asked me to read a law, and I'm asking you if you want me to respond to you. Do you, do you want me to respond to you?
Yeah, I assume you're not going to until I put it in writing.
Yeah. That way I can share it with everybody. That way we're not asked questions over and over again, you know, there. It's kinda like the concept of a Q and A on a, on a website. You know, if you have questions, you can go to the Q and A first to get answers to your questions, and then if the answer isn't there, then, you know, you can go other places. Trying to create that kinda sharing environment.
Okay. So, you, you had a, a facilities, um, policy, and I was wondering if, and I guess I'm gonna have to put this, um, in writing, I was wondering if the board would consider, um, the statute of reporting. It says, "Shall prepare and distribute to the electric not less than ten days prior to the district's annual meeting a report of the conditions and needs of the school, the district's school system." And people have talked about the sins of the past, and I, I think that's one of them, is not yearly reporting, you know, where our facilities are at.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And so, I would, I would like to ask the board to, um, to be aware of the law, and, um, and to, you know, put it in your policy, so that when you guys leave, other board members can refer to-
Yeah.
-to the same law.
Sounds good.
And also, um, in the past, like, our bond has always been reported until the current administration, so it, and the reporting would be, like, the bond started in 2010, and then it gives the schedule, so that every year, the taxpayers can follow, you know, where we're at, and, um, and when that bond will be paid off. So, um, the other question is, you said, "Wait till this week to have an appointment."
Yeah.
So, do you want me, actually, I've put a lot of questions in writing.
Yeah.
So, I'm willing to put this in writing. My question is, when there's an audited surplus, by law, it has to be carried forward. We've been egregiously late, and so there hasn't been that, that number. It's hard to follow. So, I have past years that I would like the board to take me through, and, um, and to, you know, show me how, um, the audited surpluses have been carried forward as, as revenue. And then the last one is, a month ago, you asked me to set the law aside for a few minutes, and to go into a philosophical question. I've had this hanging in my bedroom. I love this school district. I had it hanging in my bedroom since it came to my door. Our school, our children, our choice. Who's "our"? I, I'm feeling like, you know, I'd love to hear you guys' sound. Who's that pronoun? You know, who were you guys talking about? And, um, I'm hoping I was the pro, the pronoun, because of our involvement in our, in our, um, in our children, but, um, but yeah, I, I would love a discussion on the philosophical insight of "our."
Of the word "our"?
Well, you know, our school, our children, our choice.
Yeah.
You know, that came out into our mailbox, so...
Okay. So, as soon as I get that, I'll be more than happy to, to put it on the website, too, and then it'll be public for everybody. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Anyone else?
So, I'm hearing, I'm kind of a newcomer at school board meetings.
Yeah.
And, but I'm hearing that the best bet is just to go online and get all your questions answered, because you're not gonna really answer them here unless they're put in writing.
Um, I, I, I wanna put the questions in writing and the answers be made public.
They'll have to be posted online, so anybody that wants answers has to know the web, website, and how to get to the answers.
That, that's what I'm proposing, and if that doesn't work for you, that's, that's fine, I can-
I just wanna know what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying to set a-
So, I can find them.
Trying to set a, uh, an example to, to, to share information. 'Cause oftentimes, when information is shared verbally, the people that are there get the information, and the exchange occurs, but the people that aren't here don't get the information. So, I'm trying to, to build a knowledge base, is what we call it. And that knowledge base will have the questions and answers that are asked at each meeting, and, um, on top of that, there's minutes of the meeting that you can read to find out what happened at the, at the meeting. So, you know, if, if I don't answer a question here, it's not part of the minutes, but I do want it to be made public, so that's my intent. It's not a, it, I, it's not a, uh, method of excluding any participation whatsoever, but it's just a way that I, I think that I can better use the, the questions that we get and the answers that I either have to research or take off the top of my head, if that makes sense. Thanks. Hi, Christina.
I just have a question about what you're talking about, 'cause I've communicated to individual board members and then the whole board, so this question and answer by email. The communication should be to each board member in order for, it's not just to you to answer the questions.
No.
The questions go to the entire board.
Yeah, the entire board, you know, what happens is, we get the questions, and the entire board has a chance to react to. We, I try to get one person, you know, to, to answer the questions, probably the most qualified person, and, and then we all take a look at the answers. And the reason that I'm not reading the answers to your questions tonight is, I haven't had a chance to, to share with my, um, other board members. And I wanna make sure they all agree with what we're, we're publishing. Does that make sense, Christina?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure everyone else is aware of that process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not me speaking. No one on this board can represent the board, uh, as an individual. We all represent, um, the board as a group. Hi.
Can you believe that's in line with the open meeting laws?
I, I don't know the open meeting laws as well as you do.
Jim Condos, he's amazing. Yeah, because we do have the right to, to sit here and watch your-
Yes.
You conduct business.
Yeah.
So, if there's a question and you're conducting business by email, we don't know.
I, I didn't say that. It's not by email.
So, do you believe that I can get my question answered? Are you telling me no meeting? 'Cause I've been waiting for you to become chair and then another to get a meeting with you?
I haven't had the time, or taken the time, to review all of the questions you've asked, so I, I can't answer your questions yet.
So, no, you tell me no meeting?
I don't know yet.
I'm ready to put that up for you.
Kurt, may I ask some clarification?
Yeah.
Because I think we're changing how things have been done informally-
Yeah, yeah.
...over the past. So, if I hear correctly, what, the direction that you would like to set is that if folks come with specific questions-
Yeah.
That you can articulate those, please do, but that if you'd like to get a complete answer, that if they're written down and provided, we can then turn around and post those questions and the answers up on the website. But the intent is not to preclude people from asking questions that are on the line-
Not whatsoever.
-here and now.
Yeah.
Correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to enhance the, the conversation that we're having in, in the public comment section of the agenda each, each month. And that is, we can have this conversation, but if you could, if you could, if I can't answer the question, or no one on the board can answer that question, and it's important to have an accurate answer, then, um, I think it's to everyone's advantage that we make it public, and that's what I'm intending to do. Okay?
Questions?
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
Could you identify yourself?
Judy Fisher, if you can.
Hi Judy.
So, I'm, I'm kinda missing the point of why we would come to a meeting like this if we can't answer, if we can ask questions, but they're not going to be dealt with at all. Why would we just not stay in our cozy homes and go online and ask the questions? Why would we come here as members of the school district?
Has, would anyone else like to answer that question?
I mean, I believe it's all here, so-
Yeah.
I, you know, I get your point about, you need to agree, but-
I think, I think Kurt may be discriminating between some very broad and insightful questions, such as what both of you two have asked previously, which require more than just a "let's sit here and wing it for you." I mean, those are, the, the kinds of questions on school funding and how that works are not things that we could answer in the course of a night's business, as he said many, many pages. We've had a long-term dialogue with you, Carol, with a series of questions over the various, um, audits and budgets and various how we've done things. So, I think these things in mind, if there are big picture questions you want answers to, what Kurt's saying is, we'd like to be able to answer them for everybody. But if you got something you want, that's on your mind that you wanna ask, this is why you're here.
Yeah, that's why we have a public comment.
And you should. So, if you ask, for example, um, how the thirteen thousand dollar per student value is computed, we might wanna write the answer that down. You know, we can give you a thumbnail sketch, but we might wanna write that down and get it up so everybody can see that, 'cause it's a complicated question. That's all we're trying to say.
I mean, this is my very first school board meeting, and I've heard quite a few questions, but I haven't heard anything answered yet, whether it be, you know, complicated or-
Yeah, and that's why the agenda item is called "public comments." So, you're welcome to ask questions as part of your comments, but I wanna make sure you get the right answer. And I don't think just answering questions that we don't know the answer to off the top of our head satisfies your, your need for information, right?
Well, since the whole school board's here, I would like to hear some, you know, various points of view on a couple of these questions. I got, and I'm just missing the point of why we're here.
Okay.
Why didn't we just stay home and go online?
I don't know. I, I assume it's because you wanna have this conversation. Hi Jay.
So, would you, once you answer these questions, I assume people can submit them at any point? Like tomorrow, next week, the week after, whenever, and you would get back to them in a given amount of time?
Yeah, it specifically-
So, there's not like a deadline to do-
No.
-submit it by?
No.
So, and then when you come back to the meet, so the next board meeting, would you share those answers here? Or do we only get those answers by going online and looking at what you've written online?
I'm, I'm trying to find a way to, to solve the problem of people coming to a meeting and asking a question and not getting the answer.
Right.
Like, I can't answer some of the questions that are being asked. Like, the, the six questions that were asked last month, I, I had to do research, and I had to ask other people for accurate question, answers. So, you know, I'm more than happy to do that for anybody. But, um, you know, comments, public, the, the reason for public comments in a, in a high school board agenda is for people to make comments. I have this comment to make, and, you know, if it includes a question, then I reserve the right to take some time to answer that question.
Right, which, again, I, I think that makes sense, and I appreciate you researching it, as Neil said. I mean, there's some complicated questions you can't answer right at that, that moment. What I do wanna say is, in the past, I feel like this board has had good conversations with the people who've attended the meetings.
Yeah.
And I've appreciated that.
Yeah.
And so I don't wanna lose that aspect of it. Maybe we are, maybe that's, that's what is happening. But it is, it is nice to have that informalness.
Yeah.
I also understand that we need to run meetings efficiently.
Yeah.
You know, we all don't, we don't wanna be here all night. So, I, I guess I just encourage you to balance those two things as best you can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I think you, you had your hand up first, but, uh, this gentleman over here did, too. Could you identify yourself, too? Hi Paul.
Could you, should, should we assume that questions asked at this meeting would be answered, or your target, your target would be, answer them prior to the next meeting?
No, you can't assume that.
So, you could go a month, I'm gonna get answered, six weeks, right?
Yeah.
And is there, you wouldn't consider setting your target to answer these questions?
Not at this time, I'm, uh, I've only been in this office for a month. So, I don't know. Yes, sir.
You might never get an answer.
My name is Tim Buskey, I'm from the town of Addison.
Hi Tim.
How are you?
Good.
I've got a suggestion in the comment.
Okay.
My suggestion is, perhaps an occasional tutorial, since you have a computer screen up front, an occasional tutorial on how we can get these answers online. Since I spent a good part of a la, hour and a half trying to access VUHS.org, and trying to look at RETN, and looking at, and failing to do that through my web connection Comcast. I'm revealing to you that maybe Comcast wasn't working properly, but I did take time to try to find out whether you were having a meeting tonight, which was listed as the 12th, not the 11th, or whether, and what topics would be discussed at the meeting. So, I would, for one, really appreciate somebody just flipping it up on the screen and saying, "Okay, log on to VUHS.org, click on Boards, click on something else, and there will be the answers." That, that's my suggestion. My comment is, I also don't know which people that are sitting in front of me are the board members, and which people are the administrators. So, would the board members put their hands up for me?
Why don't we do this?
Great.
I'll do you one better.
Okay.
After you're finished with your comment, we'll all introduce ourselves.
Okay, well, my comment to the board.
On top of that, I'll make that a regular part of the agenda.
Great, thank you. On top of that, for the question for the board, is this new policy of getting answers, frequently asked questions types answers on the web, is that a board adopted policy?
No.
Okay, that's just driven by the chair?
At this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
And it can change at any time.
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, I'm Paula Sogan from Hampton. And my comment to the board is that as you go through the budget process with the bond vote coming up, that you will look to make cuts in the budget that would defer any taxes so that we would not have a tax increase if the bond passes. We need some compensatory cuts in the budget to make up for the increase that the bond would require.
Thank you.
I second that request.
Okay.
We can get a thousand more seconds on the board.
Again, you know, you're welcome to make whatever comments you want to. Thank you. There's, I saw a hand back here.
Hi, my name is Dave Palmiter and I'll comment tonight if you'll allow it. And I'll also comment on December the 10th, when there's a vote on the bond. I'd like to second what these other folks are saying, and that is, if you're running a large organization and you need to do some must-do things, you need to put everything on the table and prioritize your spending. So that you fix the roof or you modernize the kitchen, and you do that first. And if you've got vacancies or if you can cut budget items for purchases of supplies or things like that, those things have to sit on the back burner for a while. I keep having to have my taxes go up, it's unrealistic. And again, I'll vote on the 10th, I voted the last three times on the bond increase. But I think it's unfortunate that we're running an organization and you all pay your normal budget needs and then when there's an emergency, you come to us and say, oh, the roof is leaking, we got to fix it. You ought to have a capital improvement plan so that you budget for these kinds of contingencies and you don't come to the voters asking for increase because it affects our taxes. And I'm tapped out, I'm retired now, I don't have the money to pay more taxes, so give me a break. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Carol, is this something new?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, for me, everything that you know. But anyway, one is, you know, you talked about comparing our space footage when you, when you calculated, well, when you were looking into the facilities and the new bond. So I'm wondering, can you compare like our special ed spending? I did a little bit with the ACS and, you know, different spending items and see, you know, just the same way as you did with the facilities and see, you know, if we're in line with other schools. And then the other one, I didn't see on the agenda, I saw that they handed out the audits last month, but it's not on the agenda tonight, correct?
I don't see it on the agenda, were you, were you planning to discuss it?
The discussion of the audits?
We discussed the draft back in June.
Yeah.
And there were no changes.
Are you, are you going to discuss the final audit?
No, we discussed the draft, we discussed the draft and there were no changes made to the draft.
Oh, okay. Well, just real quick, the, I'm on page five, where it has the column Original and Final Budget Actual, and then it has the favorable variance. So I'm wondering, the original and final budget was a deficit of $4,000. The, and is that the administration's total?
You know, you don't need to respond to that.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Put it in a question.
If you'd like some detail on that, we'd be glad to provide it, but not, not as part of a public comment.
Wow, this isn't a good time.
Any other comments? Okay, let's move on to the next.
Actually, I just have one more comment.
Yeah.
On that comment.
Okay.
I'm just concerned who you are accountable to. If you can't answer anything or something, I don't know, this is very concerning. This is a red flag. So if we have to go online to find the answers.
I did not say that. All I said was.
I just feel there needs to be a more honest, open discussion with the taxpayers.
Yeah.
Especially since taxes aren't going down, they keep going up.
Yeah.
So we need to really understand what's going on here a little bit better.
Mm-hmm.
And when you're very vague and you're not answering anything, it makes it difficult.
There's a time and place for everything.
Well, when is the time and the place? I guess that's the question.
Not during the public comments.
Yeah, but she was, at the same time, you said you wouldn't, you wouldn't commit to answering the written questions with any given time frame.
Yeah, I, again, I can't tell you how long it will take. I'm sorry, but that's true. Hi.
Just real quick, if I get Secretary Jim Condos to look and watch this meeting, would you accept his opinion?
I have no idea. That's completely hypothetical. Anybody else? Okay, thanks. Next on the agenda is board communications. Are there any communications from the board?
I thought we were going to introduce our comments because.
Oh yeah, good idea. Why don't we start over here?
Michelle Kelly from Madison.
Yeah, Cam and I represent voters in Virgens.
I'm Kathy Cannon, I'm the Business Manager for the district.
Jeff Glassberg from Walton.
Carrie Bebe from Pan.
Chris Cusino from Virgens.
I'm Kurt Haggas, I'm from Ferrisburg.
I'm Lori Gatawski, I represent Ferrisburg.
I couldn't be.
I, I'm Lori Gatawski from Ferrisburg.
I'm Wayne Howe, I'm serving as a part-time Assistant Superintendent.
Lori Martin, Administration Assistant to the Superintendent.
I'm Stephanie Taylor, I'm the co-principal here at Virgens High School.
I'm Ed Webly, I'm the other co-principal.
Okay. Board communications?
What's happened to our student representatives?
I was going to cover that. Okay. It's good. At least half of it's good. And Tommy Lee's at the, they're having North-South Football All-Star Practice tonight. He's far away, running around in circles somewhere.
So are we going to have a second one, is that?
Yes.
Yes. Do we know when?
Next board meeting.
Okay, thanks. That answer your question? All right. Anyone else? No, okay. There are no student representatives, so that brings us to you guys.
Okay, I was just going to bring up Tommy Lee. Tommy Lee's a senior rep, he, he's not only, now did he qualify for the National Merit Scholar Program, our only qualifier here, but he gained 1,700 and change in rushing for our, our co-op football program with Mount Abe. And he's quite a young man. We've got a number of candidates who really want to be doing this work as juniors and they'll, we'll try to work through that and get a good one for, any of the five will be great, but get a good one for next board meeting. Today was Veterans Day. Cookie Stephanitis went on the, took her show on the road. She's been doing this for 30-something years, I don't know, I can't keep track. I've only been here for nine. She took the show on the road and did Veteran Day assemblies at all three elementary schools. And her role was taken over ably by middle school teacher Chris Sheehan, who did a marvelous job of maintaining what's really a pretty dogged tradition here, a very proud tradition. I'd like to say that the roof's great, it doesn't leak, all right? This office looked wonderful, everything's up to code, and we've got two wonderful roofs. And thank you all for your help because it was getting old, you know, fighting the floods. The, I'd like to, I'd like to thank my faculty. My faculty's doing a marvelous job of innovation, not only with the performance-based graduation requirements, but we're taking our show on the road too. Going to go down to Massachusetts to the League of Innovative Schools Conference and present what we're doing with our graduation requirements. And with full apology to Jeff, because I didn't get a chance to edit your specs, I'd like just to read a little bit of information here. And I'm very proud to be associated with Virgens Union High School. And I think we've done some things that are reasonably efficient. And I would like to point out that the comparative school district data for cost-effectiveness for year 2014 is 2012 data. Am I right Kathy?
Yes.
2012 data, so they're, they lag a year. The Vermont Agency of Education assigned schools to alike cohorts in their document, Comparative School District Data for Cost-Effectiveness FY 2014. Virgens Union High School, UHSD number five, resides in the senior high school district cohort. Of the 25 schools in the cohort, VOH ranks 24th in cost in current expenditures for full-time equivalent student at $11,642 tuition. Only Mississauga Union Valley High School is lower at 11,406, it's a couple hundred bucks. Of our neighbors, we spend less per pupil than CVU, Otter Valley, Mount Abraham and Middlebury. I've got the numbers, I'll hand this out later. In extreme comparison, Woodstock weighs in at 16,415 per student tuition. Later, in the Vermont Agency of Education report entitled Comparative School Data for Cost-Effectiveness for FY 2014, we are grouped in a junior, senior high school cohort, 7th through 12th, numbering 22 members. Of the 22, VOHS has the sixth highest student-teacher ratio, 11 to 42. In comparison, Mount Abe's ratio is 9 to 74, students to teacher average. So our teacher-to-student average is better than most. VOHS has the third highest.
Quick clarifications for the folks that are listening, meaning more efficient financially.
More efficient financially because we're serving more students.
A financially efficient picture.
Than most high schools our size. Thank you, no, that's good Neil. VOHS has the third highest student administration ratio of 285.50 students, I feel bad for that .50, students per administrator. Mount Abraham by comparison has 203.42 students per administrator. The reason for VOHS's relatively cost-efficient student administration ratio is simple. We have only two administrators. Otter Valley has three, so does Ennisburg Falls. If you've ever been to Ennisburg Falls, try to explain that one. Mount Abraham, I shouldn't say that, it used to be in Franklin County. Mount Abraham has 3.8, U32 has four administrators, we have two. Those staffing numbers are additionally reflected in the VOHS teacher-administration ratio, which makes sense, which is the second most efficient in the cohort, 25 teachers to one administrator. In light of our competitive efficiencies, what kind of a school is VOHS? The US News and World Report has us as the ninth-best high school in Vermont, a national silver medalist and number 2,034 in the nation. They cite strong proficiencies in reading, math and college readiness. VOHS enjoys over 204 students participating in extracurricular athletics and over 220 students participating in music programs, both signifiers of an excellent school. That's out of 560-something students. VOHS enjoys, I'm sorry, VOHS has a 7 through 12 dropout rate of 1.21 percent and a 9 through 12 dropout rate of 1.74 percent. We're so far ahead of the national average that people are embarrassed to compare with Vermont in general, but we have a fairly low rate as well compared to the state, the other schools in the state. We enjoy a four-year graduation rate of 89.36. We graduate 97.87 of six-year students. Now you say, well, six-year students, I never heard of that, because that includes 7th and 8th grade. No, it doesn't, it includes special ed students who are here by, by means of a multi-year plan because they can't graduate on time. So we graduate almost everybody that we can lay our hands on, on an IEP is what that means. VOHS matches the Vermont Individual Education Plan rate of 13 percent of our students are on them. Vermont, VOHS betters the Vermont EST rate, Educational Support Team Plan rate, 12 percent to 8 percent. EST saves us from spending more money on special education services. So the fact that we have more kids on EST plans means that we have fewer kids on IEPs, which are costly and mandated. VOHS is a member of the League of Innovative Schools and New England Secondary School Consortium. VOHS is a leader among New England schools in developing performance-based graduation requirements, enhanced individualized student plans. 12 percent of our students take advantage of the Patricia A. Hannaford Career Center. VOHS is the sponsoring school of the internationally recognized Walden Program, recently featured in the New York Times, the New Yorker Magazine and just last week, National Geographic Online. The VOHS class of 2013 had an average SAT score in critical reading of 528, in math of 541, in writing of 492, all in need of improvement, but not shabby. At last report, the VOHS class of 2013, these are very tricky numbers, we never know if they're really true. 50 percent are attending four-year colleges, 24 percent are attending one or two-year colleges and three are in the military. If you add that together, that's 77 percent of our kids are doing something educational with themselves. And when we first got here, it was 52 percent. So we think that a lot of these efficiencies are often overlooked because they're, they're so deep in the infrastructure of how the school works, that it's very hard to discern that they are indeed efficiencies at all. The fact that our, our tuition rate is 24th out of 25 in the high, in the high school district cohort is pretty illuminating. And if, if I could take you on a walking tour of Mississauga, you would readily see that, why they have their efficiencies as well. And so I just wanted to roll that out. Jeff, I apologize again, I didn't edit to your specs and, because I forgot to. And, and that's pretty much what I'd like to close with.
Thanks Ed.
Could I make a quick observation?
Yep.
So Ed, I want to thank you for providing some very detailed numeric and empirical answers to some of the questions that you just asked Carol and that you, Ms. McEwen, asked last time. So hopefully we'll have this, once it's cleaned up.
Yep.
Posted online as well, because that's great stuff.
Yep.
Maybe the, that report, I, I've seen those reports come out every year. So that comp report, maybe we could stick that up there as well.
Sure.
So these good folks could see that.
Yeah, it was an email to, to all of us.
I saw it, we always see it, I didn't expect it to be read, so.
Okay, great.
We always include it in the yearly report.
Right. Right.
Comparative data.
Right.
Okay, nice. You all set?
Well, I was going to save my comments for the budget discussion a little bit later, but.
Okay.
Of course, we are a 7th through 12th school, so Ed speaks for the entire system when he talks about the great things we're doing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there any superintendent report tonight?
Well, I'll just say briefly for Tom that he has spent his time working on budget development with the administrators here. Has also spent a bit of time on the high school facilities and trying to get that multi-year plan ready for you at some point in the near future. And just to relate it to that, point your attention to the policy that you are to be looking at a little bit later in regard to setting aside money for maintenance.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I have the monthly financial report. And I will say only two weeks has gone by since we last looked at this. And so we did just look at this two weeks ago at our last. And so we did just look at this two weeks ago at our last meeting. And then, so again, it does include the bills that we will be approving later. It has teacher salaries have been encumbered, so all the teachers that are under contract, teachers and support staff, their remaining salary is in the encumbrances column, so that the amount remaining pretty much consists of benefits for the most part, some supplies, some of our larger expenses we have made. So we've already made our bond payment, for instance.
So in the case, looking at page 10, looking at maintenance expenses, some of these line items where we're over already, is this relating to repairs in the auditorium?
I'm not sure about the repair and maintenance, that item there, I would have to look at that. I know the equipment, the maintenance staff needed a different type of a floor machine to use, so we had to purchase that. So that's, that's a third of the cost, three years, so that would be a third, so that was roughly that $5,000 that were over at that point. That was not budgeted for.
So that was like a cleaning machine, or?
With the green, with the green supplies that we have to use now, it calls for a different type of machine to use those. We bought, we, a year ago, we entered into an agreement to purchase a machine over three years, and then this past summer, we entered into an agreement for a second machine to be purchased over three years.
Okay.
I guess I'll just call your attention to the totals that are on page 10, towards the very bottom, towards the very bottom, it says total 001 general fund. So just to point out the column totals. So our budget is $9,499 million. We've actually spent $3,685 million. We have encumbered $3.3 million, so the amount that is remaining is about $2.5 million. But this is only November, middle of November, so we have half, more than half year to go. Page 10, the bottom of page 10.
Don't get there.
Okay. You're looking at last month's. Are there any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything new from the Hannaford Career Center, since the meeting is on Wednesday, and I just reported on last month, like, two weeks ago.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm set.
Okay.
Business manager? Yes.
Yeah. Next action item or next agenda item is business matters, approval of bills and director's orders?
I'll send back your way.
An amount and dollar value and?
You'll be glad that there's only three spots to sign this time. That'll make everyone happy. Despite the fact that we spent this much money, I'm happy that we only have to sign three places. And don't forget to put the date at the end. And it's for 6,260, or 626, I'm not reading it right, for some reason, 626,596.77.
Do we have a motion?
That was a motion, second.
Okay, thanks. Any additional comments or questions, or did you see anything?
Anything else that was strange?
Anything unusual?
So there's a payment to the contractor in there, and then a payment to the roofing company, so that's some of the larger items.
Are we, is the contract fully executed? Have we signed off yet?
No, we, there's still retainage and a punch list.
Okay.
Yeah. There was an email that came out this past week. The work is done. The roof is finished and complete and operating correctly, and there's a punch list, which is the equivalent of, these are the last things that we have to do, and, you know, if everybody agrees, then that's, that's it. There's also a discrepancy that Kathy and I talked about tonight, about compensation for the failures, the leaky, the two incidents that occurred. So I'm going to discuss that more with Morrissey. What they recommended the compensation be is not what I expected, so I may need more detail from Bob, but, you know, my expectation was there was going to be compensation for those two events, and what was offered, I don't think is sufficient. So we'll see what comes of that.
Through the educational routine and the total disarray.
Well, yeah, you can't compensate for loss of, yeah. But, you know, there was a lot of power usage, there was a lot of, you know, equipment, there was a lot of overtime, so I'll leave it at that. Can I answer your question? All right. Any other comments on the bills? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. There's the first reading of a building maintenance budgeting.
Did you get a copy of this in your packet?
This was distributed last-
Last week.
Right.
Does anybody need one now? Because I did bring a couple, like, in.
I did change, Wayne?
No.
Okay. So this is, we're not taking action on this tonight, this is just a reading.
Right. See if there's any suggestions or edits or anything.
Yep. So I have a couple things I'd like to propose.
Yeah.
One is I'm going to go right to Carol's suggestion earlier tonight. I guess she's gone now, but I think it's a good idea that this policy reflect that we add a statement about the facility condition in the annual report, even though it's not specifically budgeting for maintenance of facilities and grounds, so I would recommend we say budgeting and reporting on maintenance of facilities and grounds, and we just specifically say that we'll produce a one-page or whatever summary, including the status of any outstanding bonds. I actually think those are really good ideas. And then, just another little tweak, or one little tweak.
So before you go on, could we say for any outstanding debts?
Sure.
Rather than just the bond, maybe, you know, if there are any other outstanding, I don't know, use whatever word you think is appropriate there, but don't be just specific to the bond.
No, but I think it's, it's, it is, it's a good idea that lets people know on a year-to-year basis where that's at.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Outstanding debts related to facilities.
Yeah, exactly. And we've got the template already put together right now, based on the spreadsheets that you've assembled, so makes it relatively easy. So as not to put us in a financial box, if we come back into times of extreme financial duress, in the second line clause begins, "The board shall include in the annual budget proposal an amount not to exceed," and I think it should be amended to say, "The board shall, as feasible, include in the annual budget proposal an amount not to exceed," whatever. So that there is the opportunity for an "out" if we really need to exercise an "out."
Change that "shall" to a "may."
Sure, yeah. And maybe we need to discuss that, but there's a reason why we didn't do maintenance budgeting in a few, the past few years, would have made for extremely difficult budgets, so I just throw it out there for conversation.
Well, what I think, I hate to give ourselves the opportunity not to put something in there. That's a double negative, and my English teacher from high school, Ms. Yuri, would probably be slapping me right now, but I think we need to make it definite, that we put something in there. Otherwise, it'll be tempting to end up where we are right now.
I tend to agree, because if we don't put anything ahead, then we need to go to bonds or we need to finance more than if we planned ahead, we would normally have to do.
Because this is not the same as the capital improvement, or the capital funds that others have brought up.
But it is maintenance, it's just a regular budget.
This is specific for maintenance. Right.
Well, but let's note that the third paragraph does address that separate item, so this is trying to do two things.
Right, right. Okay, correct.
And it does address the gentleman who issued during public comment, what we're discussing is setting into policy that the school board will annually have a capital maintenance budget that's detailed, that's one item, and the second is that we'll annually recommend the funding of reserves that the voters will vote on separately each year. So that's the policy we're talking about adopting this evening. We won't be adopting it this evening. It's the policy we're discussing right now.
Now, that, that second component of it, I think, that should be a "shall."
Yeah.
That one should be a "shall" as opposed to a "may" or a "will."
Yeah. So if it is a-
I guess I'm hearing they should both should be "shall."
I think they should be, because otherwise, we'll just be in the same boat we're in now. We'll end up, you know, making difficult decisions, but, you know, the compensa, the issue will be, we'll end up asking, you know, the rest of the community for more support.
Well, I mean, if we fix things immediately, instead of deferring them, then the cost will be less anyway, so if we have the funds to do that, it would be better to do it as needed.
Preventative maintenance is always less expensive. I agree. So-
So the third paragraph does not require you to fund that capital projects fund every year, just to report on it.
Establish.
It requires you to establish it.
Oh.
And then to report out on what expenditures were made out of that fund, but doesn't really say that you will do it. Maybe you want to leave it that way, so you have discretion.
Last sentence says the capital projects fund will be presented annually to the voters as a separate, but it doesn't give an amount, but it says that annually we'll, we'll do that.
You could annually do it for zero. So couldn't you, I mean, you'd be meeting the letter of what's written there, in the sense of it, even if it was presented and you said, "There's no change, we're going to do it for nothing." So it isn't forced you to put something in the box.
Yeah. And I don't think we know what we need to put in, so I think the worst-case scenario is, yeah, we recommend zero. The best-case scenario is, we know what we need, and we put it in there for the future.
Just, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
So it seems as though our homework is really in the first paragraph in determining whether we're looking at fixed amounts or some percentage of the overall operating budget for the entire school should be allocated to operations and maintenance.
Yeah.
Do we have any numbers on what actual maintenance costs?
Right now, it's about 10 percent.
Yeah. Yeah, our homework also includes input from, from the administration, and I was told today that we'd be getting a plan by December 1st, so that'll be part of, so I don't know if we'll be able to, to approve this with a number in there by next month, but we'll have a few days to at least have a guide from, from what we've asked for.
But what we're talking about, to be clear, is as we look at the budget in the section on operations and maintenance, is notwithstanding oil, gas, trucks, salaries, all that, building maintenance and repair, that line right there is the one that we're saying should be at least one-half to 1 percent of the total budget. That's just the proposal that's in there.
Yeah, it's the proposal.
Right. And so if we get that plan, we can set that number a little bit more carefully.
Yeah.
So that's just that one line item that that policy is referring to, when you're not looking at other building, maintenance, or grounds, repair, equipment repair?
Well, I mean, that's-
And those are the types of things that would be included in the plan.
I'm looking, I'm seeking clarification, so I guess I'm asking, I'm not stating, but it's in this area, and it's not about gas and oil.
Right.
And cleaning supplies.
Right.
So are there other places in the budget that have identified maintenance and repair needs? Because I thought that would be where they all were.
No, under general, there are equipment repair and maintenance under quite a few categories.
And under health and PE, there'll be $3,000 in for repairs, for instance, and there are repairs inside.
Backstop or something.
Right.
So, and there are repairs also in the athletic budget, athletics and activities budget.
Well, so where we need to get is, we need to get that facilities plan in the deferred maintenance schedule so that we can actually know what plugs where.
Right.
But all we're saying is that we should hold back some money to do that.
And we could certainly move, change the budget around, so rather it was all, that it starts to be reflected all in one place.
Yep.
That may be transparent.
So-
Do we think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just going back to the wording. It's the total general operating budget for identified maintenance and repair needs, so as long as they're identified, it doesn't matter what category they're in, as long as they're identified.
Do we want to put a percentage in there? It's, you know, the examples are given.
I want to, but I don't know what it is, that it should be.
Yeah, I mean, 1 percent would be close to $100,000.
Mm-hmm.
Are there some examples in the world of places that do this, that we could use as a model, or that we could get some kind of guideline from, that, that we think are doing it right or doing it well?
Well, how did we get to the $6 per square foot versus 12 versus other schools? Was that a, we just took a number from their budgets, Kathy, or do you recall?
I mean, I think I looked at those types of repairs, not at salaries, not at utilities, not everything else, building repair, grounds repair, equipment, maintenance, equipment, repair, you know, all of those types of items.
Well, could we do this, so for the next meeting, when we're going to actually move this, could you provide your recommendation as to, you know, by then, we're going to have the deferred maintenance plan, we'll have an idea of what we're looking at for 2014, 15 school year that we want to fund?
Yeah.
And then that, plus your knowledge of where all this stuff lives in the budget, you can say, you know what, you really need to be doing 1 percent, or you really need to be doing one and a half percent, or whatever it is.
Right.
And we can take that and use it.
We can say this is what 1 percent would cover.
Yeah, that's another way to do it. Sure.
Nesdeck used to have years ago, a place out of Massachusetts, but they would have some parameters for some of these things, based on your square footage, sort of maintenance cycles, and I know that Kathy's been thinking about that. So I think her point's really well-taken, that you don't really want to include salaries and all that stuff, you want to really base it on the footprint and the physical plant and base the percentage on that. So maybe that would be a place to look, or even Visbit might have some kind of suggestions about that.
I'm fine with that, because this can always be amended once it's made a policy. I think that the most important thing is to have a policy, as, you know, our public is telling us.
It's long overdue.
Okay.
We need to do this for a long time.
All right. So the changes that I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, is change this to a policy on budgeting and reporting for the maintenance of facilities and grounds. I heard conversation of- I heard conversation about changing shall, shall to may, but not a, not-
Draw that comment.
Okay, and were there any other changes?
Yes, so in the third paragraph, instead of the board will establish, the board shall establish, and then the last sentence, I think it would read the capital projects fund proposal shall be presented annually to the voters as a separate article.
Okay.
Also in that third paragraph, it should be anticipated and unanticipated. The idea is that we'd be setting up this fund to have reserves for anticipated maintenance needs.
Right, like a roof. Yes.
So after the word addressing? Make sense, right, Claire?
And also have down that you wanted to include a statement about the facility conditions being included in your note report?
Right, that would be maybe a third paragraph or a last paragraph or something along those lines. That would annual report on the physical condition of the facility and the status of any outstanding debts, I think is how Kurt reframed that.
I think that's what Carolyn was saying. She'd like to see that on an annual basis, not just when we're trying to amortize things.
Good idea.
Yeah. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. So next, next month with Kathy's guidance, we'll look at a, accepting a policy for the budgeting and reporting for the maintenance of facilities and grounds as amended. Do we have any personnel matters?
No.
Okay. Anything anyone would like to bring up under other? That would require our action items? Our actions? No? Okay, so just, yeah, second draft of the budget.
Stephanie, you have those.
This is something different.
So do you have a notes page?
You and Ed are starting.
And Ed is not here, so I could jump to the, we, we received budget information from our departments.
Yeah.
Built on actual expenditures. Since my sector comes later, I was just introducing that we built the budget around, the high school budget is sort of built around departments in those areas.
Yep.
And I think Ed can report on that and we'll go through some major changes.
Sure. There's a couple of things to point out under general instructional budget. One is the increased cost in, it's, I, I think it's actually backwards. It says that we're increasing the stipend for department coordinators, but I believe we've moved away from that terminology to teacher leaders. We have 17 or so teacher leaders who earn stipends approximately $35 an hour to do extra work above and beyond their teaching duties. And that's a new model called distributed leadership that we have fully embraced. It's a lot more efficient, for instance, than hiring an, another administrator. Also, under substitutes, you may see a line for substitutes and a line for substitutes curriculum development. When we have a professional development opportunity during the day and we ask the teachers to go to it, we have to pay for the subs. So basically, our professional development has been buried in our substitute line where people couldn't find it. So we're breaking it out because I don't think it's fair to assume that the teachers are just willy-nilly missing working opportunities when we're asking them to do professional development. So that's why that's rolled out there. Just to remind you, on line 55016, parenting education is our contract with the parent-child center in Middlebury. If you go to agriculture, it's the first time I'll have a, a chance to tell you about a little fun I have when I go through these. And that is, I take a pencil and I underline all the way across from 260, the unemployment insurance, or actually on this one, it's under PHCC staffing contract. But everything above the line is what I call fixed costs because I can't do anything about them. All right, because I wish I could. For instance, in agriculture, it's easy. Our agriculture, we have one teacher, he makes around 50 grand. Health insurance is 18,370. I have not, not a hand in either one of those numbers. Social security is 3,765, 271, and then you'll jump down and see the PHS staffing contract. We actually contract with the Hannaford Career Center for this position, all right? And so he actually gets paid by their wages. So when you jump back and you realize, and you look at everything below there, repair and maintenance, student travel, teaching supplies, textbooks, equipments, and dues and fees, amounts to $2,995, which is 4% of the total budget of that position. So the, what I call the fluid costs or the discretionary costs in the budget in every department is somewhere around, and I think Steph and I talked, I think it's going to average around 3.5% of the total budget are things that I can cut. So that's a tiny amount and I, I just wanted to throw that out there. In art, pretty efficient, 4.5% of the total budget goes toward teaching supplies. For instance, art is all supplies, as you can imagine. Flip over. Kathy, how come, we have five full-time equivalent under language arts and I can't figure out why because we only have four? Okay, thanks. And I didn't know if that affected the figures at all?
No, that's-
Okay, good, okay. So here's a great example. In, in language arts, which we used to call English when I was an English teacher, above that 260 line, unemployment insurance, is $293,263 for four teachers. They have, they're expending $4,325 mostly on textbooks and they, my discretionary spending in that department is 1.5% of the guaranteed take of those four teachers. That's a con- that's contract, contracted wage and health insurance, social security, work months comp. World language, the fixed cost is around $200,000 for three teachers. They're spending, they have asked, now remember, they're asking to spend $7,681 and that's a 3.8% of the total cost of their program are things like books and supplies and memberships to foreign language associations and such like that. Just to give you an idea, my English budget at BFA St. Albans when I was English chairman was in the upper twenties. And these people are looking at, at breaking down 7,000, I mean, that's discretionary. These people are looking at spending 7,800. Health and PE sort, sure.
On world languages, three faculty, does that include the middle school as well?
No, not at this point, but we'll let you answer.
Well, it, well, it does because we have middle school students who are taking a world language. So in each of these departments, you could tease out some middle school costs, but they're lumped into because they're, they're really high school teachers. So middle school teachers have art classes and those teachers are counted in this part of the budget. There is a, there is a middle school, not an exploratory, but high school students are taking a French class second semester.
So I, I just, I think that's helpful for the board, it's helpful for the audience as we talk about this. The full-time equivalents we're talking about are spread over seven, 12.
Absolutely, yeah, and I was going to try to say it in, in the middle school part.
In the following areas, agriculture, physical education, music and art. All those teachers are seven through 12 teachers, even though we absorb them into our budget.
School counselors.
School counselors are also seven through 12.
PE.
I said PE.
And technology.
And technology, so those are all positions that budget in the high school and are shared. And it's part of, it's, it's part of historical design. I really don't have much to do with it.
We, we don't have any, the only dedicated middle school faculty are in the middle school part. The, the rest of the faculty share, so they're, they're crossover teachers.
And can I ask you a quick question? How many students does each academic department represent? Is it like all 580 students or is there an average figure?
Yeah, the, well, the high figure is going to be English because we, if there's 568 kids in, in the whole school, we'll teach 568, probably a little more than that, right, Jay, because of repeats? So we'd be teaching the whole enchilada in English and, and, and less so with the smaller departments.
Right.
But in math, we tend to actually teach more than four years of math to each of our kids because we believe that that's a key to their success. So I, I think that's as close as I can come to.
That sounds good.
I could break it down, but-
So when you're spending $7,000 in a department on 560 students, you're actually spending very little money on the students?
We're spending a miniscule amount of money on students.
On that?
Yes.
Under 260?
Yeah, yes, we do a lot, we do a really good job of sharing. Health and PE, we got three teachers of 213,240. We spend 4,470. A thousand of that is because our pep con, our pep grant has run out. We, remember, we had an almost million dollar pep grant and so we're starting to bear some of those maintenance costs. So there's been a raise of $1,000 in maintenance.
What, what are we repairing, do you know? I mean, is it just put in there for like?
For maintaining, for instance, the ropes and, and the, you know, all the equipment on the high ropes course, climbing wall. We don't want that to give a kid 40 feet in here.
Does it get inspected? I mean, no.
Yes, we get it, we, we have inspected yearly by the company that's qualified to do it and who built it. And that cost comes from somewhere else that I'm not completely sure of. It has been coming from the grant. And I know it was inspected this year. Math, we have five full-time equivalent teachers because we believe that we, that's an area that we really invest in. The fixed costs are $400,362 for those teachers. They're asking to spend $17,375 mostly to new textbooks and, which is a change predicated by our adoption of the Common Core curriculum. And smarter balanced assessment consortium testing requires us to shift our instruction and, and adopt new texts. I'm sorry to say that lies at the feet of the federal government, please.
Question on that?
Yeah.
Two or three years ago, we realigned the elementary to middle and middle to high school sort of pathway and trajectory, you know where I'm going?
Yeah, I do.
In order to have a very predictable pathway from K all the way up. Maybe a question for you over there. But so does this mess that up?
It's, how do I, how do I answer that, Nancy?
I don't feel messed up.
I don't think I mess it up. I think it's augmenting that progression. I think they've changed their mind on one of those math problem, programs as, as better than another choice previously. And it's, it's just augmenting that process, isn't it, Nancy?
And do we need fixed books for that? Is there a way to let the-
Let's overturn those, okay.
Yeah, okay, way to subscribe and leverage technology as opposed to that.
Does textbook work better for not knowing?
Okay.
Yeah, the vendors are going crazy on us right now. Like I get a call from Hoot and Mifflin almost every day. I mean, it's just like a feeding frenzy. We've just got to try to hold them on.
Oh, because of the Common Core.
Yeah, because of the Common Core, it's really crazy.
Sure.
Music education is probably the least efficient in one way. The faculty, we put out 143,156 for two of them. They've asked to spend $17,975, which is 12% of the fixed, of the fixed cost, which is rather high. But one of the things they're running into is increased maintenance costs on the musical instruments that are permanent. And so they're, they're, they're trying to wrestle with that. And again, these are things that are asked for, not, we don't give it to them on the first draft. Science, there's four full-time equivalents.
Can we just go back to music for a second?
Yeah.
About $5,000 for software, what?
Software, that's-
That's smart music.
Is it MIDI? Yeah, smart music.
This is how, uh, man?
Yes.
Because I know what it is?
Yeah.
Because I watch it happen. I've actually used it myself. This is how assignments are given and fulfilled. The student will, on their computer, get music streaming across the screen, have to play it. The machine is recording it and actually submitting it to the teacher. It's pretty cool.
And you can compose music with that too as well?
There's all sorts of games you can play with smart music.
Yeah.
So the instrument has a microphone on it?
So this is, this is something that's deployed on every machine of every student that's in the music program or their, their family's machine.
That's much better than I could have done, Neil. Thank you.
We also have, we have approximately half of our middle school students who take music classes every day.
And so for last year, we had, we have a, we had a ARRA grant that was just for this music program. So we had some left over, so that paid for those expenses for FY13, even though this budgeted.
Does that make sense, Jeff?
So just, it does beg the question if we're investing in smart music, which has a tremendous library, whether we also need the textbooks. And that's a question for Sue. I'm not going to make presumptions about that.
And it's, textbook is also generalized.
It's sheet music too.
It's sheet music and, and other forms of, just of non-disposable stuff.
In a school, you can't just download that stuff off the web and use it.
No.
You also want to, you want to recognize copyright, so you don't, we, we try to be very careful. You can't just make copies of the sheet music and have to buy the copies. And that's the right thing to do.
Says the media library specialist.
Just clarifying for our audience.
Yes, fair use is very important. Under science, we have four faculty. The fixed costs are $262,265. They've asked to spend $12,890. I think they're heavy on textbooks and they're prob- we're probably going to have that conversation. But right now, the discretionary request is 4.9% of the fixed costs. Social studies, we have four teachers full-time equivalent. You saw Rebecca here earlier. Fixed costs are $278,289. The, they've asked to spend a fairly paltry amount, again, because they've got the new course coming online. The textbooks bumped a little bit, but it's $6,885 or 2.4% of the fixed cost. Walden Project, two salaries, fixed cost of $149,571. They're asking to spend $3,009, $30,900 and that's 20% of their fixed cost. And a lot of that goes to travel and it's also subject to my conversation with their director.
Is there any offsetting income for that program that subsidizes it?
Not yet. I mean, I wish they paid us for every magazine article they appeared in, but we're not getting anything like that. We do have some in-kind benefit from the garden to our kitchen. And I've never asked him to put, or I've never asked he or the food service people to put a cost on that. But there has to be, there's a reasonable amount of in-kind profit realized from the garden itself.
And, and we have students who come from outside of district to attend Walden and they go into our student count and we get?
They go into our student count. We have students from Bristol and Lincoln who have taken school choice, so they're on our child count. And so we're getting their tuition in addition.
We don't get, we don't.
Oh, we don't get the tuition, but-
Money doesn't fall.
Well, money doesn't fall, that's true. I was thinking of the other one, yeah.
But we get the, we get the FTE count.
Yeah.
So we get a proportion of the total cost.
Right, it's, it goes through the formula. I, I was wrong.
To clarify for that, when you, when you have a student- To clarify for that, when you, when you have a student that counts as a full-time equivalent, the state gives you is nine thousand and something dollars per student. So that is, if we have kids choicing in, CVU keeps the money, but we are able to build a state for that nine thousand dollars per each student, right? Do I get that correct?
That's true, very good.
I don't think so.
Nope.
No, I don't think anybody follows from school choice kids. And that was, either it was such an uproar about it.
Okay.
And I think that's why South Burlington's so angry about school choice, honestly.
Well, because Walden is a magnet. And so these, you know, these costs are kind of miniscule. If, if you get four kids choicing in, the costs are gone.
Right.
You know, it pays for it.
And before the school choice law was so wisely passed, we had two kids paying tuition out of pocket. Parents were paying out of pocket. So we were getting, you know, eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety-five bucks uh, for those kids. And the minute the school choice went through, um, there's, I'm not gonna get political here, but, um, that costs a lot of schools a lot of money.
Yeah.
South Bronx has got forty-something kids and they're down from a hundred and something, because they're not making, they're not getting any benefit financially at all. So, but.
How many students are in Walden?
Right now, uh, twenty-one. Twenty-one. And in the past, we've educated them for the same or less amount of money than, uh, we educate kids here in the building. They have a higher, um, college attendance rate than we do. Not that it's they and we, but, you know, just as comparative. Driver and safety education, we have one faculty member with benefits of sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-one fixed costs. She's asking to spend seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars, which is ten percent of the fixed costs.
Can I just make a note here that, um, the, the last payment on that car will be made this year?
In March?
So the decision has been made to increase the amount spent on repairs and then in the following year to replace the car.
We're gonna, it's a, it's a four-year-old Avalon and we're hoping to get a year more use out of it before we try to turn it around. And, uh, and again, Kathy's noting that the lease is over in early spring.
Lease or purchase?
Purchase lease.
It's a, actually.
We can talk about that like next year then.
I call it lease because I'm tired. Um, but.
My car's five years old too.
Uh, I'm not sure which sheet comes next, cause I didn't staple it.
I think computer ed.
Computer ed? I don't think I did computer ed.
And Kathy, I wasn't sure if we added, um, the new server in here. Is that, is that reflected in these numbers? Tom and I weren't sure.
I'm not sure. We had that computer mess.
It might've been, it might've been a repair and maintenance, so that might go up to six thousand dollars.
It could. I'll just add that here, make a note.
That's a new server for the, uh, the middle school lab that we run it, uh, an operating system to give students an opportunity to learn multiple operating systems.
I did not do support personnel either. Um, I did do, uh, library. Am I close?
Support personnel, challenge program, career development.
Okay, challenge program and career development are the same teacher. We share the teacher. The fixed costs for that one teacher are seventy-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. He's asking to spend four thousand dollars, which is five percent of the fixed cost of the program. Um, and that's in the two, both challenge and career development.
Middle school next.
What is?
Middle school.
Middle school is next.
So, middle school is treated as a department here, but you have to keep in mind, middle school really represents, uh, ten point four, uh, faculty members. Um, we have two part-timers, a, a point eight and a, a point six. That's the one point four. But, um, it's really four content areas. So it's a hundred, roughly a hundred and seventy students, um, under here. But they're, you know, teasing out the costs of the exploratories, which would be the art, library, music, um, as well as school counselor, as, we have three special educators assigned to the middle school, which would be in, in those costs. Um, so the fixed costs in this, um, department for ten point four OFTEs, about seven hundred and seven thousand. And, uh, the discretionary cost this year in the budget that I'm proposing, um, is twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, it's, um, in some significant areas. It's much less than the thirteen, fourteen budget. Uh, but there is, um, we're using a, a new math program, Go Math. This will be the second year. And it is, um, we call it consumables. It, it, they're books. They have to be purchased every year. Think of like, sort of, um, uh, they're workbooks, but workbooks on, on steroids, sort of. This, it's not just rip-out sheets. So, um, it, it's, it's part of instruction. The, this year, the contract includes, um, an online, so when we can support student, maybe one-to-one initiative, but students can access that outside. It's support materials, videos and, and those sorts of things. So it is the, it is the workbook and that other, um, that E version, sort of, that students, that's included. I think that the biggest change here, um, is I tried very hard to reflect what our actual needs were. And so, um, in textbooks, that's down from the thirteen, fourteen budget supplies. Um, I have built in a, a curriculum, uh, curriculum development figure of, um, that represents two days of curriculum development. We, um, it, we have the Capstone Project, which is, uh, sort of the middle school version of the PBGR. The PBGR, the work that teachers are doing is supported through the grant funding that, that was the Roland Foundation Grant. And the, the work that teachers are doing in the middle school is not supported that way. So in the past, it has been supported through, uh, de- district curriculum development funding, but if that doesn't come through, I wanted to build in some time this summer for curriculum development. We really need to do that. That, this will be the third year. We, that is a, a sort of a graduation requirement from eighth grade. And we wanna make sure that we're doing the best work that we can to support students in that area.
Steph, just for pointer reference, so a hundred and seventy students in the middle school, ten point four faculty. Seventeen to one as a ratio right there. But our actual student-teacher ratio is much lower. So that's because it's spread over the whole school, right? Seven, twelve. And it includes these other specials, counselors, nurses are in that count.
The music teacher, the art teacher, the PE teacher, all those people, those licensed professionals.
Licensed teachers.
Yeah.
The nurse, the librarian.
But for instance, the ten point four, we have four content area teachers for the, the Phoenix team, which is our seventh grade team this year. We have ninety-six, give or take, one or two in, seventh graders this year, divided by four teachers. So at any one time, that's, you know, twenty-four or so kids. And that's the ratio, twenty-four kids and one teacher. Because.
In core.
In, in core. Those four classes, English, science, social studies and math. We al, we do have three special educators. We do have another, a reading specialist that's working with students outside. We do have a transition teacher, but those additional people kind of lower the ratio. But, um, but it's very real. There are twenty-four, twenty-five kids sitting in a seventh grade social studies class every single day. Because we, we didn't, we didn't just hire a new teacher, because we had a bubble of twenty, twenty-four kids over the eighth grade class, which is, that was the reality of the numbers this year. That answer your question? Yep.
All right, special services, I don't think we're gonna even try.
We even assess, you can step in?
We have an assessment. I'm gonna go, I could go over that now.
Yeah, I think Kathy's the only one qualified, because special ed is moving from the high school to the district.
So I did hand out, um, another, a two-sided sheet and this is also moving.
Extra to this?
Yeah.
No, not for me, actually. I was thinking for our audience. I don't think that one got passed out.
So are there extras? All right, so the special education and speech pathology, those two categories comprise special ed in all of our schools. So that was, expenses I'll need to go through the central office next year. So I, this is a, just a summary of all of the special ed budgets for the four schools as they stand as of today. Obviously, you know, these numbers are still moving in all of the schools. And if one school changes, it will affect, um, you know, the assessments for, for all schools. Um, so just special education, um, and just, there's a few, uh... So this is with input from, um, all special educators. We have something we have to do for the Agency of Education called the Service Plan, where we try to accurately identify the cost of special ed for next year. So a lot of this comes out of that work that was previously done. So the total special education is about three point seven eight million dollars. Speech pathology, about three hundred thousand dollars for total costs. The entire district have a little over four million dollars for special ed. Um, we've decided to assess that based on equalized pupils. And the numbers that I'm using are the equalized pupils, um, for this year for FY fourteen. We do not have the new equalized pupil number yet. This was just to get an idea of how the assessment might affect the individual schools. Um, so we'll get the new equalized pupils, um, the first week or so of December. Preliminary number on the first, and then they, they lock that, um, towards the middle of the month. So the assessment to the high school, the assessment is two point one, one, six million dollars. But if you look up above, the total cost for the high school would have been two point five million dollars. So about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, is, is being spread out over the other schools. Um, and then just comparing, so the budget for thirteen, fourteen for special services was one point nine million dollars. Um, and on here, it's two point four million dollars. So we would have had, um, an increase of about five hundred thousand dollars in just that one category, based on the needs of students, mainly in that tuition line item.
Kathy, can I ask the rationale for why, um, these costs are gonna be moved to the central office? Why are they?
Um, it's, it was a, it's a law.
State law.
State law, yes.
Two thirty?
Yeah.
Two thirty move it, not to thirty.
Just as soon as I know I'm the first.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So the, um, Kathy, when the, and this may be a conversation for a different time. And if it is, then let's have it at a different time. But when you look at school by school and you do comparison, school by school, and then you compare that to the equalized people assessment, you know, which is the more fair assessment of the cost to service those kids that need special ed? Is it the, these or is it these?
Well, the, I mean, the equalized pupils is the, is, you know, it's how students are weighting, weighted according to their needs. So the students on IEPs, the students on Medicaid, students, the students, English is not their first language. Those students, you know, the equalized pupil wa, waits.
Oh, really?
For those needs, yes.
I didn't realize that.
Yes.
Okay, so the.
I think it just changed too.
The weight of the student.
Or is it about to change?
Goes up, the more.
I didn't know that.
So it's announced December first.
So then this is actually the fair way to do it.
Yeah. It's not one-to-one. It's not one student to.
I did not realize that. Okay.
No, it's, I forget if it's one point three or?
So it's an elementary school student is one point, is one point zero.
Yeah.
A high school student, I believe, is one point one.
Okay.
An elementary, um, a kindergarten or preschool is point four six.
Right.
So, so the formula does acknowledge that it costs more to educate a high school student than it does an elementary school student.
And the high school number changed, not too long ago, it used to be a little more than one point one or something?
One point two, something like that.
Yeah.
Went up a little bit.
Welcome to school financing.
So this will change, but it's just, you know, it's probably, um, a fair representation of how it's going to, um, affect schools. So, stay tuned. And so I would expect that, um, that for the schools that have their assessment increase, that the corresponding revenue would also increase.
Right.
Right, right.
Um, so that there would probably, there, but there will, there will be some additional costs to, um, all, you know, to the other three schools.
Could you speak to extraordinary costs, Kathy?
Um, so extraordinary co, uh, so extraordinary costs are costs of, or costs for any s, one student that exceed fifty thousand dollars. Um, and we've made the decision to just wrap that, you know, just have all those expenses be, um, distributed. Um, there are a number of students here, some at the elementary school, that, for which, um, have more than fifty thousand dollars in expenses.
So for, after fifty thousand, the state contributes ninety percent?
Ninety percent.
Okay, just, not that it's free money, because you're still paying those taxes. But just so you know, as far as local tax goes, once a kid goes over fifty thousand, we get ninety percent reimbursement after the fifty thousand.
Then the first fifty, we get about a sixty percent reimbursement.
Sixty percent help, yeah.
Does it come, it comes in the following year or something of that sort, doesn't it? So it's a little delayed, but we still get it.
We, I, I can figure out the number, so we do, I do make an accrual for that. So we, we record that in the proper year.
Okay.
Even though the money does come late. You're, you're right.
So looking at, uh, the budgeted increase for special ed over the budget for the current year.
Mm-hmm.
About five hundred thousand dollars, about twenty-five percent. That's assuming what we, what we know. It doesn't deal with anybody moving into the district that we don't know. And so based on what we know, is it tuition placement?
It's tuition, so we, we have some high-needs kids coming up, just, you know, looking at the high school alone. Um, hi, some high-needs kids coming up from the elementary schools that have one-on-one paras, that have, uh, need for tuition, um, and some other, um, expenses.
So is that all?
And we have.
Money we're gonna get reimbursed then at some point, like?
So if, if you had, if you had a lot of kids who came in who were just a little expense, then we would have to realize that. But if we had a lot of expense for somebody who's already a lot of expense, most of that, we're not gonna actually realize, because most of it's gonna get reimbursed it. Well, it's still, it's still ten percent that we have to. Right. Come up with.
I mean, if we, if we look at the, the twelve thirteen budget versus the actual for twelve thirteen, I mean, there is quite a swing there. I mean, we've, you know, I think we have been under-budgeting, um, what we, what we need. Um, so I, I think that my numbers reflect closer to what the high schools' needs are for fourteen fifteen.
But it's based on, my question was, it's based on what we know.
It's based on what we know.
So somebody could move into the district that we don't know about and we're not making an allowance for that.
This is based, we have not made an allowance for that.
It happened Friday.
Good news.
It happened again tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, we got, we had a big package show up on Friday. And so it's just, it's something that, it's the most, it's the cra, it's the craziest thing I've ever been associated with.
So we had been identified as a high-spending school. And because of that, um, we have to submit a plan to the Agency of Ed every year. Um, once we consolidate for next year, that designation will go away, because we're spreading the costs in the more students. Anyway.
I don't want everybody to think that all the tuition is going to, uh, hyper-special schools in Burlington or anything. We also, uh, we have a population of learning impaired students, quite a large population, that are, uh, served by our, uh, consortium, diversified occupations program in Middlebury, which is significantly more expensive than you might think at first blush. But, I mean, we've got a lot of kids in really good programs. And then every once in a while, you get a kid that's, you just can't serve anywhere. And you're legally bound to serve them, and if they're on an IEP, and here's the other thing, you're legally served, uh, you're legally have to serve them until they're twenty-two. And if you have a kid that's very expensive with high needs, that you have to serve until they're twenty-two, that's a huge cost. And, um, it's, it's out of our hands. It's completely... And to, for instance, to re, to recover DO program, we'd have to build another wing onto our school and hire four or five teachers and five or six aides. And we, we can't do that. For instance, I just wanna make sure. For instance, I just want to make sure it's not all sending, we have, you know, I can't violate anybody's FERPA rights, but we have people at really expensive schools, and then we have a lot of kids that are fairly expensive school. I mean, so it's just the way it is right now.
I guess we can go back to ed.
Oh, good. What's next? Extracurricular, I didn't really take on. It's a-
That serves all students though?
Serves all students, seven through twelve. It's, it's a shared program. It's reasonably. Let's see if I can find it. Sorry, unstable this.
We have a new item there, contracted athletic trainer.
Okay, so if you look at extracurricular programs, you know, everything above unemployment insurance is two hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven fixed costs. Then you look down, you see officials for twenty-seven thousand, that's level budgeted. Then all of a sudden, you see a contracted athletic trainer. We've gone from zero to thirty-five grand in one year. And you ask why? And again, you can turn to the legisla- your legislature and you can embrace the fact that they passed the concussion law, which means that we have to have certified athletic trainer for what sports, Peter? Football, obviously.
What they deem collision, football, hockey, lacrosse, boys and girls, even though girls, you don't wear helmets, you don't get hit. There's no checking, but yet we have to have a trainer for those, wrestling.
Which has almost no concussions ever, being twenty-five year wrestling coach.
And unbelievably, soccer is not one of them.
Yeah, can't believe it. Softening the forebrain.
No, no equipment. Run very fast into each other.
There's thirty-five thousand dollars that just got snatched out of thin air, as far as I'm concerned. And the concussion law was, it was a bone of contention in the legislature for almost a year and a half. And, you know, it's, it is what it is. Also putting extended day year programs, that's a, that's not something that my athletic director, Peter Manin, went out and campaigned for. It's a place where we found, it's century twenty-one or whatever. I don't, I don't get it. No. It's twenty-first century grant and it's parked in his budget, so I don't want you to think-
We're not in real estate, are we?
Yeah.
Can I back up to the certified trainer? So the thirty-five thousand dollars would suggest that we would bring somebody in the building who's a certified athletic trainer.
We do currently, and right now- That's being paid, I pay for it out of fundraising account for the fall. For all of our high school soccer games, we had a certified trainer onsite for basketball and for wrestling. This winter we'll have one. Booster's just going to pick up that tab, but.
So my, my, my question is, I'm not questioning the need.
Yep.
My question is, can we satisfy the law by having a certified athletic trainer who happens to be one of our educators?
Yes, we have to have a certified athletic trainer or some form of that at all of our things. So, yeah, we're looking, I'm looking to see if we can just bring one on staff.
No, so my question is this, can Mr. Cook obtain certification and be a certified athletic trainer?
Yeah, if he wants to go back to college and become a certified athletic trainer, yes.
It's about forty-two hours.
A doctor.
A week?
Or-
Forty-two college credit hours.
Credit hours.
The law stipulates exactly what it can be, who can be deemed coverage can have. You know, an EMT cannot meet that requirement for the law.
And that's how we've been doing it.
But a doctor can, right?
Only if they have special training and concussion.
Special concussion training, yeah.
Yeah, my team doctor, BFA, was a urologist.
Well, there you go.
But, but what you're saying, Neil, is correct. If there were a staff member that was a certified athletic trainer, then that would be a wonderful situation, and they were willing to cover all the games.
And that's what happens, is you need to have an individual at every game.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
So.
Every home game.
No, of course it would.
Home game.
Yeah, yes.
The home team, the homeschool supplies it.
Everything else in the athletic, in the activities budget is pretty much flat budgeted. We have a little bit of a raise in field maintenance, three thousand dollar raise in field maintenance. And that's, that's pliable anyway, subject to drought and flood and getting the fireworks trucks stuck out in the middle of the fields. That's Steph's first action. All right, what's next?
Guidance.
What is it?
Guidance.
Guidance, okay. Guidance is pretty easy, said I, hopefully. I took the staples out.
There's zero change, so.
Okay, guidance, you've got a lot, you've got, it says three ti- three full-time equivalents, and that goes from seven through twelve. And it's a fairly large bang for the buck. If I remember my math work, there, what they ask for in a budget is like two percent of their fixed costs, and that's a pretty good budget efficiency.
How many secretaries are there?
What's next? Health and speech. Speech is being absorbed, isn't it, Kathy? Speech is, is gone, and what do I have?
Health.
Health, health services is pretty much flat budgeted. It's, well, no, it's not.
That's one nurse for the entire student body.
We've got one nurse. It's bordering qual- qualifications. So we've only raised four thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollar change, and a lot of that comes in her benefits. So it's pretty much level funded. She's a bargain. She's very good. We had a staff member go down today with a cardiac issue, and she was Johnny on the spot and did a marvelous job stabilizing him until we could get him help.
And the nurse is here all the time?
She's here full time.
Okay.
We also, we have a twenty-five hundred dollar substitute cost built in there because you need to find someone who has special certification in that area.
It's a different area.
Library. Library and audiovisual share a staff member, and there's also a library aid point five. The fixed costs on the librarian and aid are ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. They are asking for fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five combined between audiovisual and library, which is sixteen percent of their fixed cost. Now, my co-principal, she gets very defensive when I call her an ex-librarian, and she says- absolutely not, I'm a library media specialist. But this library media specialist does point out that we have a really, really low book budget for our library. And in fact, it's, it's a, it's a third of the book budget I had as an English department chairman at one of my schools. So, I mean, it's really very low. And so that's, and he runs a pretty tight ship here.
And he also does, he extends, I mean, the library's available to all students, of course, but he also teaches in the, the middle school. So that, that is, he's one of those faculty members that teaches in exploratory. So he has direct classroom contact every other day with a rotating group of seventh graders right now.
So the bump in equipment under the AV line, is that your server that you were talking about somewhere else?
No.
No. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that is.
It hasn't been fully explained to me, honestly.
It looks like a shift actually from supplies to equipment category.
No, we built, we bought the screen for the auditorium, and that's only, that's only a grand or so.
Okay. Under AV, under equipment?
I have to look at the worksheet.
It's a net nothing. It doesn't make any difference one way or another.
Well, but it's, it's on the worksheet, and I apologize for not, what's next?
Board of Education.
I don't have anything to say about the Board of Education.
Overpaid.
It's a, they cost us nine hundred dollars less than they did last year. That's all I know. And then the supervisor union assessment has been discussed by Kathy, I think.
So the administrative services, we're still working on the SU budget, and that is also allocated by equalized pupils. So we're still working on that. And then just up in the Board of Education, the auditors fees line, that will be added into the administrative services. The auditors fees has to only be paid for at the SU level and assessed out. And then there's that special education assessment.
So the next thing is the office of the principal. I used to get all excited about this until I realized I didn't have any control over this either. The fixed costs are everything above dental insurance. I, I just didn't, I ran out of time calculating. But, so starting at three twenty, staff in service is stuff we, we pay for that's very necessary for teacher development on a year-by-year basis. Could be CPR, could be diversifying or diversifying your instruction, could be any of those things. Credit recovery is now something that we do in the summer. If you see, that's a big ticket item. All of a sudden, it's grown. And that is the idea that school is year-round, which came precariously close, close to being reality this year. And it's the idea that kids can fail and come back in the summer and work to get their credit. And it makes perfect sense, and it's, it's in most, or great many school districts in the state of Vermont, that's a reality, been a reality for years and years.
Or an eighth grade student who's struggling to complete a capstone project and needs to spend some extra time over the summer, building that skill base in order to be prepared for ninth grade. Six students last summer in that situation.
And so it, because we figure that learning is the constant and time is the variable, kids need more time. They ought to have some time in the summer. The, it's interesting that we had our first senior graduate on the, on the wait of credit recovery this year. She was one point away from graduating, and we didn't let her maintain their standards. She went back to credit recovery, worked very diligently all summer long, actually learned something and graduated in late July. Software, student management software, that's nothing we have much of a say on. We were told to use Power School, and that's what we use. Equipment lease is mostly copiers, isn't it, Kathy? And that's, again, is nothing that I ordered. That's another, not trying to throw you under the bus, Kathy, but we got, we got. Yeah, we're going to go back to the mimeograph, I think. Advertising, we're, we're just down to two hundred dollars. Printing and, and forms, it's, we're trying to economize. We're trying to go more to computer and less paper. And so you can see we've gone from five thousand dollars and, or gone up to five thousand dollars, but it's just a losing battle. Travel, two thousand, that is something sometimes we take advantage of. Postage, we're looking to add a thousand dollars because we need, by law, we need to mail some things that we can't send out on the internet, because there's not, everybody has the internet, of course. Here's one I'd like to explain. This is one that I, I have to try to explain. Graduation materials, you can see in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, it was thirty-five hundred dollars. And I'd been here for seven years or so at that time, and I watched my administrative assistant making out a bill to the senior class for like twenty-six hundred dollars, and I said, what's that for? She goes, graduation. What do you mean graduation? Why does the senior class pay for graduation? Well, they're paying for the chairs. They're paying for their own flowers. They're paying for everything. And we just didn't think that was fair. No school, in my knowledge, charges the senior class for graduation. So we've absorbed those costs into the print, the budget of the office of the principal, just out of a sense of fairness. So you can see there's little in there that I have any discretion over, but that is one of those things. And I'll defend that as best I can, so.
And we also built in some costs for the step-up ceremony for eighth grade as well.
Yes, some of the step-up ceremonies included in that.
Yeah, on top of that, the senior class does raise sixty-five hundred dollars.
Yes.
For project gradu-
For project graduation, so they were raising somewhere, it looks like around ten thousand dollars back then. And that's, that's unconscionable. That's just not okay. I, I think operations and maintenance is in such flux now that it would be foolhardy for me to address that. We do have a maintenance plan coming, and we do have the first skeletal draft of a one-year budget that's blown out a little bit more detail than in the past, but I'm not comfortable.
And we have adjusted some security, some utilities and some services that we knew, we know that we're getting an increase in trash removal.
Right, trash removal.
Some utilities that we have been advised of an increase, right? Propane, John.
Are any of these services in the twenty-six hundred category supervisor union?
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
Like trash removal. I would think that all the schools and-
District-wide contract.
Do they all use Casellas?
Yeah.
It's not a district-wide contract.
No.
Yeah, that's a great question to ask.
I think on the same list of items that need to be consolidated up to the SU level is the purchase of maintenance supplies.
Sure.
But heating oil is not either?
Yeah, well, those would be some of the benefits of having a unified union.
Yeah, or just doing it.
Well, yeah, that's.
Thank, thank you.
Since there's not a lot of swing in the others, just fast forwarding to something I think I heard you say, Kathy, and I believe I see it in here down in debt service fifty-one hundred, right near the bottom. An increase in the proposed budget under bond interest is in anticipation of what may pass?
Yes, it is. It's wishful thinking. So that is the bond interest of two point eight million.
Yep.
And just as a point of information, I requested a schedule today from the bond bank for the two point eight million dollars.
And the rate, of course, the rate has gone up. So when I'm looking at the draft of a flyer from last year, where we said the rate was two and a quarter percent, so the rate today is three point seven three. So the rate is going up, so just as a-
Two point eight to three point seven, did you say?
Two point two five up to three point seven. Yeah, so the rate is increasing.
Ow!
And this is something that we probably won't close on until July, so.
So just to, to get to a point that I heard articulated earlier during public comment, the bond principal for a two point eight million dollar bond would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year.
Right, so the, so that's not included. The first payment would be the year after.
Until the following year.
And be a hundred and forty.
Right.
Right.
So that's the magic number that you all are after, clopping off of this in addition to the interest.
Right, so, right.
If I heard you correctly.
So then just to summarize what we've discussed tonight, there's a, an increase of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or an increase of three point six nine percent. And then just some of the things on this list that I passed out, just to reiterate, the health insurance increase, I've used an increase of four point five percent. That's the rate increase that our insurance company applied for with the Department of Financial Regulation, and that has not been confirmed, but they're comfortable with that rate. Dental insurance increase, I use three percent. I still do not have any guidance from, from V-HI. I think that they talked about maybe doing something in December. Support salary increase of three and a quarter percent as per their contract. The teachers, there are no increases shown for them. Their contract is under negotiation and expires at the end of this year.
So this doesn't assume any increase in the teacher salaries?
Correct.
So this three point six nine percent number is nothing to pay any attention to right now.
That's right, right. If there were a three percent increase on teacher salaries, it would be ninety-nine thousand dollars.
So it would be four point five. So it would be four point five percent increase total.
I just ran that number, yeah. Doesn't mean anything. We talked about the speech education and speech, special ed and speech assessment. We talked about the driver's ed car, we're looking at that would be a new purchase for FY sixteen.
Student transportation, that's sort of out of our hands now too.
It is, yeah.
It didn't really change either.
No. And then one thing that we have not talked about, we talked about it somewhat, the credit recovery, the twenty, the after-school program, and it's, and then on the very front page here, summer school, and there's a blank space there. That's a discussion that I believe needs to be had by the board as to what additional investment they want to make into summer school, if any. The way it happens now is the SU contributes a certain amount towards summer school, and Medicaid has contributed to summer school. But the program here at the high school is growing so much that there probably should be a contribution here. The twenty-one C program, Twenty-First Century, the after-school program, that is in the fifth year, fourth year, fifth year. Every year, the amount of the grant goes down with the expectation that the school district would pick up more and more of that program. So that when we got to a certain point in the grant, that most of the costs would be supported by the school district with very minimal cost coming from the state. So, we have not discussed those items in detail, but-
So you're saying summer school is different than credit recovery?
Credit recovery is a portion of summer school. It's part of it.
And where's the summer school line?
The summer school line-
Page one.
It's page one, and it's empty, there's nothing there. So in the past, the summer school was paid for by the twenty-one C program.
Yeah.
Dollars set aside for summer school by the SU, so it would be included in the assessment, and then dollars set aside by the Medicaid program to pay for part of it. But it's a program that is having more and more participation, more and more items are being added to it. For instance, last summer there was, at the SAT prep program was added to it.
Wasn't there, training for, wasn't there another elective in the summer school for-
There are electives.
Yeah.
There's a number of electives for younger students.
Yeah.
And this is the stuff that's grant-funded, the elective material. I mean, right now, most all of it is grant-funded, but I mean, there's some, there comes a point where you have to make a decision between what the citizens and what, you know, the taxpayers are gonna support for summer school versus what the parents could pony up for, or that could be acquired under grant.
The other-
You know, I'm watching summer school move its way into our budget.
Oh, absolutely, that's the intent of the federal government. That's, that's the whole idea.
Why do you think it says social security next to it?
I mean, it's those creeping grants that we can't keep our hands off of, that's exactly what happens. But on the other hand, we're under, I wouldn't say intense pressure, we're under heavy pressure from this Agency of Education to have school-along education, to have summer programming. That's, it's not like an opinion of Armando's, the new secretary is, you know, doing the same thing. It's almost an unfunded mandate in some senses.
And it becomes, it becomes an issue of renegotiating, or not renegotiating, re-examining the entire model around the teacher contracts.
Granted.
You know, and that's not a conversation we're gonna have here or now, or even in negotiations, I don't suspect. That's a statewide thing that needs to happen.
So is that the conversation you're suggesting? Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, so that's, that's what Kathy's suggesting.
Right, no, understood, understood. We do need to have that conversation, but not now.
So maybe we could, I could bring some numbers about last year's costs and how they were paid, just some financial numbers that we can see.
Yeah.
What the shortfall might be.
I'd like to point out, we're also trying to, this is gonna sound bad, we're trying to earn some money, like we did last summer, from Mount Abraham. We took Mount Abe kids in, and they have a billing notice for ten grand that I'm hoping they're gonna pay some. And, but I don't know if they have.
So, not the last that I knew, and I need to contact them, but there was, there was interest in sharing the program with them. They were very impressed.
But that's in credit recovery, right?
What's that?
That was in credit recovery?
Yes, that was, all their kids were credit recovery.
Okay.
We have not explored enrichment with them at all.
Right.
A question that I just have to put out on the table, are you getting any indications of retirements?
Yes.
Something that should be discussed.
One, but it's, the person hasn't committed.
It's not remaining.
Right, well, I mean-
But that's, it would be a reasonably good savings, should that happen.
So, talked about the bond interest includes interest on the new bond, fingers crossed?
But not principal.
But not, the principal, right, the first principal payment would not come until the following year.
So it wouldn't be in this proposed budget?
Right. And then, still to come, but not until December, would be the Hannaford Career Center numbers, although those, that's not part of our budget, that's, the entire Hannaford budget is voted on separately, but we would know what our share would be. And I do need that to calculate the taxes. So revenues, they come about the middle of December. Equalized pupils, I would get a preliminary number about the first, but the number would not be finalized until the middle of December. And then some of the parameters for grant, for calculating the tax, the tax rate would not come until December. And I'm not even sure that I would have all of this by our December meeting, because our December meeting is fairly early in the month, so just a heads up. But we'll continue to make changes so that we can get, fine-tune this.
What does the contract say about as we enter a new negotiation cycle, and if negotiations aren't complete yet, what does the contract say about the increase that the teachers would receive? Is it the straight, same as last year?
You keep the same contract until you negotiate.
Right, until you negotiate.
Okay, so I think we need to at least prepare for us a draft that actually acknowledges what's likely to happen one way or another. Because I think not including, not including that is, it's not a fair representation of what the budget really is gonna be. And if the Board continues to not include it, that would send a signal which we probably don't intend to send to our staff.
I'll figure something out.
Does that make sense? Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question else, the food service program?
So, the food service program is not part of the general fund budget?
Oh, it's not?
It's not.
So that's just an independent contract?
Right, so that's what's called an enterprise fund, because it's for selling a meal, bringing in money, so it's not part of the general fund?
Is that contract that's part of negotiations?
It is, it has an annual renewal, language for annual renewal, that happens in the spring.
Sure. Yep, hi.
What actually, what actually does the underwriting of the bond, the Vermont Bank?
Vermont Bond Bank, yes.
Yes, Jim?
Kathy, you said, I mean, there's no increase on the salary lines, so I'm just wondering, just as an example, on the page it has math and music education. Math, there is a change of forty-eight hundred dollars.
So it could have been a column change, it could have been someone had a column change.
Oh, right, so they-
Two of them, Gloria said there's two of them.
Okay, so those are increases we know will be happening.
I think of that increase regardless.
Yep, go ahead.
Is it possible to ask for some clarification?
Yes.
My name's Ken McKeon.
Hi, Ken.
I think it would be very helpful, just from our perspective, there's some, there's a sense of ambiguity around the whole notion relative to the state itself and what the state gets for education funding and how it sets that. Our understanding, and it may be wrong, I'm asking for clarification, there's some two hundred and seventy-three school districts or specific budgets, give or take. Am I right in assuming that all of those budgets are submitted to Montpelier? And then the tax rate relative to education is set based on that budget? Another, another way to ask this question more specifically is, am I right in assuming that for gyms, as an example, could actually cut our budget by ten percent or fifteen percent, submitted, this is a hypothetical, submitted with all the other two hundred and seventy-two budgets, and the town of Benton could still get a tax increase?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's true, that's a valid assumption.
Yep.
Yes, that is, yes.
And to your point, if I understand correctly, is you're saying that this three point six nine percent increase on these papers, it probably does not reflect what's gonna happen, because you don't have any teacher salary increases.
I don't think it fairly represents the increase in salaries that should be reflected in here.
The likely, something-
So Kathy gave us the number of what it would be if it were, if we propagated what the contract says is the increase on any given year. If we propagate that forward to the coming year, Kathy said that's a ninety thousand dollar bill. So if you add that in, the actual percent increase, and trust me on the math, is about four point four to four point five. That's the percent increase that we'd be looking at before we start to tune this budget.
Yeah.
And, and this is when I went, I hope some of you know the lady who asked, "Why should I come to these meetings?" Because as we get closer and closer to a budget, then we'll share the effect it's gonna have on individual towns, to the best of our knowledge. But we, we can't definitively say exactly what's gonna happen. But, you know, if you follow us through this whole budget process, you'll see how it affects, you know, we'll, I assume you're gonna go through the whole analysis. And you'll actually see the numbers, how the numbers lay out by town. But that still is not the final stroke of the pen, if you will, because we're part of a bigger, you know, like you said, a bigger organization, that's the State of Vermont Education Funding Law. So, what we do, we try to be as conservative as we can, and part of the answers to the questions that you had is that we gauge what we think the community will approve. We don't wanna put a budget together that you don't want. But, at the same time, we don't have the final say over whether, you know, it affects the towns in the same, in the same way that it affects other towns. There were, there have been, you know, school districts in the state that take great pride in a ten or fifteen percent increase in their budget every year. But they're, they're usually towns that get money from other towns rather than send money to other towns. So, it, I hope you stay with us through this whole budget process, because you'll see at the end, you know, as, as well as we can predict, you know, what, what a town, it'll affect each town. But even then, that's not the final calculation.
Go ahead.
So I'm just curious, when we're seeing these laws that are imposed on you as a school board, a few of them just came up tonight-
Yeah.
That's driving the budget, do you have someone that actually goes to the legislature and complains?
Yeah, it's called the VSBA. The Vermont School Board Association and the Vermont Superintendent's Association.
We, many administrators have testified and-
Yeah.
And so you don't like a lot of these laws that they're passing, because they're imposing on units that specifically everybody-
It's not that we like or dislike them, it's just, it's difficult to predict. It's, it's very difficult to predict what's gonna happen.
But there is a unified school board association. Do you have lobbyists?
Yeah, yeah.
Get up there and say, "Can you get past this?"
Yeah, yeah, we, and I'm on the Resolutions Committee for the VSBA, so every July, we get together and we sit down and we say, "What should we tell the legislature this year?" I mean, you see our resolutions, and every, every-
It's always silly, but I'm telling you, it's not, it's really very serious business here. And I find, sitting here, you guys are really, I have the utmost respect for you, I really, really do, because I know your job is tough. And, but I'm also paying a lot of taxes, so I'm looking for a solution. And it's so frustrating, sitting here tonight, saying there's no control, we have no control over this. I have one percent of this budget we can actually have a say about. So obviously, there's nothing you can do and nothing we can do, except pay the bill. And that is really, talk about fair, I don't think that's fair.
There, there isn't nothing you can do. There are things that you can do that aren't being done.
Like what? I would like to-
Well, if you look at other states, you know, and I'm not saying this is gonna happen in Vermont.
That has to do with Montpelier, then?
It, I, we don't point fingers here, so, you know. But if you look at what happens in other states, you have to understand that some of the things that Ed talked about, we are world-renowned for. The graduation rate in Vermont is world-renowned. It's just, we aren't even compared anymore to other states, because we're so successful graduating, preparing kids for life.
Many leave.
Well, you know, that's, I'm not gonna point fingers on that one, but, you know, there's, you know, the new commissioner that's coming in, the new, she's not a commissioner anymore. The new secretary that's coming in, you know, and Diane Ravitch just had a, you know, a conversation with us in Hanover last month. And, you know, it's, if, the more you get into it, the more you try, but the more difficult it is to, to concentrate on the dollars and cents. If you concentrate on the, on the quality of education, we're doing a great job. But if you concentrate on your pocketbook, you know, I don't think anybody here is not a taxpayer. I mean, we all see the same effect.
I'm coming from the pocketbook.
I just wanna thank you, I wanna thank you for raising the points that you did and actually getting an opportunity to begin to hear the answers. You know, so it, it might not be as you may have perceived it to be when you came here at the beginning of the last meeting. You know, there's a lot of constraints, and the people around this room are just like you. We have kids here, we have homes here, we pay taxes here too.
But what is the practical effect? If you present a budget, let's say, let's say it's four point five percent increase, and voters say, "No," what happens then?
Comes back, and the budget has to be reworked and re-presented.
It has to, what if the voters theoretically never approve it? What happens then?
What's happened in what, one town?
Actually, there's one town in Vermont that has been declined five times this year. I don't remember the name of the town, but we have to, we have to have a budget, we have to provide a service.
Walden.
Yeah, Walden.
I think it's Walden.
Nice.
Yeah, five times, they came back and five times it was defeated.
So where does the money come from, pay the teachers and support them?
Well, you know what? I'm not real positive on this, and I don't want you to put it in writing, but I think they end up having to borrow the money. And then they have to pay once they have a budget, because they have to provide the service.
You have to provide services.
Yeah, so I think what happens is, you know, that's why it's, you know, we just, we lost, we lost thirty-five thousand dollars because we, we didn't do the bond the first time. Now, you know, that's, that's bad on us, bad on everybody, it's the community that chose not to do that. But if we had done a two, two point eight million dollar bond, you know, last year, we would have saved thirty-five thousand dollars. But, you know, it wasn't the right time, so you just, I don't know what we can do in the, in the limitations that are put on us right now. But there are, there are other ways to raise capital, there are other ways to raise revenue, but it can't be done by the school, it can't be done by the school board. It has to be the community saying, "We're not gonna do this anymore." In California, I was in San Francisco in September, in California, one of the cities in California, they haven't had an increase in property tax for ten years. But every year, every parent pays twenty-three hundred dollars into a school foundation rather than pay an increase in property tax for every student. Now, you know, is that legal in the state of Vermont? I don't think so. It's possible, but, you know, there are ways to get around- possible. But, you know, there are ways to get around property taxes, but you end up paying a different way. Because we believe in the United States that we should educate our, our children.
Every child.
Actually, I believe it's the law.
Yeah.
Notwithstanding.
I'm sorry, I'll get off my cell box.
The question, however, is that the first time the budget gets turned down, I'm going to be asked to take money out of that discretionary 3.5% average that I have in every budget area. And so I'll be taking books away from kids, we'll be taking, you know, we'll be taking opportunities away from kids. That's the first thing that happens. And it happens every time that I've seen it, is that immediately, they, you know, people say, cut sports, cut music, cut out, you don't need that many books, you don't need that many computers, and that's where it comes the first time. And usually, it's a good faith effort, and you shrink the educational budget for the kids, and then the taxpayers say, well, that's a good faith effort, we'll pa, we'll pass the next one. And sometimes that happens. And, but usually, at the first cut, kids get hurt. At the first, honestly.
Yes, but.
I don't buy, buy that thinking, because, you know, at the University of Michigan, when they used to ask money for the legislature, they'd say, if you cut our budget by that much, we'll stop teaching English and math, as opposed, we'll not send the band to the way games, you know, or some other way to save money. So I think there are ways, that assumes that the 3.5 or 4.5 has no opportunity for saving, other than hurting the kids.
Well, sir, I mean, there, there may be opportunities to tune this budget, as I alluded to. But remember what this gentleman, the question this gentleman asked, and the answer to it, which is, even if we cut this budget by 20%, it wouldn't make any impact on what the state's levy is, right?
I understand.
So we need to be careful about, you know, blindly deciding we're just going to slice and dice, when it actually in fact does hurt our kids with no practical taxpayer benefit.
Right.
It's, it's a really.
Going through these, if you come up with a budget, though, that sounds reasonable the first time.
And that's, I mean, that's what we always try and do.
That's what we've been doing.
4.5% increase, I would guess, is not going to be approved by the taxpayer.
Really?
Not many.
But this also.
We've seen with these, around the state, what happens. I mean, I'm no expert, but it seems to me that even what people are thinking these days, that, and his question is, is it best to go into your tightest possible budget and sell it, or is it best to go at 4.5 and have to take 2% out at a later date?
Go ahead.
Can I just make the point, I, I don't know if anybody knows, if it's general knowledge. Nancy could verify that this is true, Jay could verify that this is true. Over the last seven years, I may, we have riffed three full-time positions. We've riffed a science teacher, we've riffed a social studies teacher, we've riffed a middle school math teacher.
Reduction in force.
Reduction in force. So we've let three teachers go in the last seven years, perhaps prematurely, because we should have, maybe we should have kept them in our pocket until now. But we saw the student count going down, and we felt it was prudent at the time to riff those teachers. They were all good teachers, and they were all valuable in what we do here. But, so, I mean, sometimes we forget that over the last few years, we have cut back in the one area that really hurts us the most, and that's qualified professional personnel.
I haven't forgotten, right?
Nope.
I just want to remind people that right now, we're looking at a 3.69%, and that's in spending. So that doesn't, that does not trans, that does not correlate exactly to the increase in the taxes. I mean, you know, there's revenues that will come out of this, you know, we have to run the calculation. For each of the towns, this is just the high school component. There's also the elementary school component that we'll figure in. And, and if you remember, a few years ago, and under challenges for change, this school was successful in having a zero increase budget. And so what happens is we cut maintenance. And, and now look where we are. You know, money that we should have spent on the school, we aren't, we are needing to, to backtrack and make that.
It's worth noting that we were one of the few schools in the state that.
We were one of the few schools that did that two years in a row.
And it was a challenge that the governor asked us to make, and because we believed it was the right thing to do. But, you know, maybe it was the wrong thing to do.
I don't know how you can cut the budget without not doing something. As I say, if people work harder, that, that's not, that doesn't work. I've been looking at a lot of budgets in my life, you gotta say, okay, and there are universities that do this, Barry Louvy, Emma said, we're not going to, we're going to eliminate this department, we're not going to teach Greek anymore, because we can't do it.
Well, they also get $250 million in, you know, private funding, so, and only 17% from our legislature, so.
I would expect you to consider it not, for example, take one, and this may be a terrible example. Do we have to teach agriculture? Hannaford Career Center teaches agriculture, they got a real professional teaching it. Do we have to have a budget for agriculture?
That's who teaches our agriculture.
That's who teaches here. Okay, we're paying for it, right?
Or we would send that kid to Hannaford and pay the Hannaford tuition for him to go to Hannaford.
Maybe we can't teach it, maybe we can't take on agriculture. I said, I'm just figuring that may be the wrong thing.
I just, I would suggest you stay with us.
Keep taking costs out. I agree with you.
Yeah. I would suggest you stay with us, and the meeting, the Hannaford meeting is on Wednesday night, I'll be there. And if you want to come and, and watch us do the same thing there, we're going to do the same thing. And I'll tell you, at Hannaford, it's much more sensitive to student participation. We just cut a green building program because there were no students. And it was a, you know, it was a, a great program, but we had to cut it because there were no students. So I think what you're saying is, if there are no students, you should cut the program, and we do that. So, you know.
When we get programming in there, I think.
Right.
So.
Hi.
I would just like to suggest that the reason that we're all in this room tonight is how to educate our students to the best of our ability, and in the best ways possible. And I just would like to ask everyone not to lose sight of that. It's, you know, it's not about, always about the bottom line, it's about how we create, you know, educate our students to be the best students they can be, to be the best citizens they can be. So hopefully, they stay in Vermont, you know, and, and if we don't invest in our schools, that's just going to not happen.
Unless there's good jobs.
Hi, Jay.
I just want to thank you for involving us in the conversation, because my feeling after public comment was that we weren't going to be able to be involved, so I appreciate us being able to ask questions and you answering them. And I just want you to think about that for public comment. Some of those questions you couldn't answer at that moment, I know. But some people left this room and are not here right now, and have a very bad taste in their mouths.
Yep.
I have a much better taste in my mouth now, because I, I'm, my confidence is renewed in you, I just want you to know that.
And, and maybe I was misunderstood, but I still have to be adamant that if I can't answer a question, I reserve the right to take the time to answer it correctly.
It just felt like every question was, was that way, I think. So I did, anyway, and I know you're trying to figure it out right now, Kurt, and what's best, and, and try to keep the meeting short, and tonight it was a three-hour meeting.
It is a three-hour meeting.
We appreciate that, you know, but anyway, just, just something to think about.
So I, I would rather see the answer be correct, and accurate, and detailed, and public, than try to answer our question and continue to have that conversation at one time. That's just my philosophy.
And I'd encourage you to do both, maybe. Maybe you're putting that information on the web so everybody sees it, but you're also answering people's questions here as you can. So, anyway.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next on the budget, for those of you who are reading along at home, is executive session. Do we have an executive session?
Can I ask?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I just ask about the, the flyers, the mailers that were for the bond? Was there any feedback on those emails that Laurie sent out?
I frankly haven't had a chance to look and comment yet. I just have not had the time.
Just because it's, it's been down to, it's been a crunch time, and I know the printers, and the last time we tried to put out a flyer, it went out after the.
I mean, we sent out the two, we sent you the two flyers that we had sent out before, with no changes made, hoping that we could get some help on working on those.
I'm more than willing to put something together, but I just need to have the information given to me, how you, what you want out there, what, what needs to be on there. And it needs to be done this week.
Yeah, and the, my response was, I'm ambivalent, so.
Well, if we need to get it out, we need to get it out.
Right.
And I'm not ambivalent, I am out capacitized. I just, there's a reason you didn't hear me.
So maybe we don't do it.
If, if you look to the e-news that just came out, I did get the opportunity to structure up the message, and "Did You Know" that I used was the 1958 kitchen, that was the "Did You Know?"
And we can use some of that language.
Um, yeah, I mean, feel free to harvest from it.
If you want to put, put something together, I'm coming in on Thursday morning, and then I can take a look at it.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
If that's okay with everybody, or?
I mean, I, I'm with Neil. I, I'm more than willing to do the Facebook page, the blog, the website, answer the questions, and do all that. But I can't, you know, I, I don't, I don't see how those pamphlets have helped. So I, I guess I have stayed.
They hurt last time because they were late.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean.
I mean, we heard lots of, I heard lots of good support for this four-point plan. I think there are, we heard last year that there are a number of people that don't have students in this school, and do not read the independent, and they rely on what we know, for their information.
Kathy, also, you met with Mrs. McGillan the other day, and one of her comments was not getting information about the school. So this would be one way.
I real, I'm, I'm a strong believer that the flyers go out. Yeah, I know that I've found a million flyers in the recycling, but I think that you have to meet those needs of the people that are saying that they don't get the information, and if they don't read the as an independent, at least, at least we're making the good faith effort of providing them with something that they can actually hold on to.
And it's what they kind of have an expectation of seeing, even if they don't read it, they have an expectation of seeing it, that it's there.
Like I said, I'm more than willing to put something together, just give me the info.
And it sounds like Laurie just volunteered to, to do that, so.
Well, I, I, I will look at what you have already, and then.
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
I just have from the last time that we've done.
Well, it can easily, I mean, the last one can easily be modified to reflect the $2.8 million bottom line and the topics that we're doing, and, and fit in one paragraph about the four-point plan. That writing's been done. I can actually send you writing that I've done, both from e-news and then from the last front porch forum thing that I shot out there.
All right. Could you do that, and then we can have a way to mix it up a little bit?
And then I'm going to send to the board for your all's consideration what would go into an op-ed. And the more, the more wordsmithy it gets, the more I'll pull back. You know, but it won't be super wrong the first time.
Yep.
And that I'll try and get to this week so that it's done.
And now it can be tied into the video.
Laurie, if you want help on Thursday, just tell me what time.
Nine o'clock.
I wasn't able to get here by that.
Well, I'm meeting with.
No, the video's done.
But, but I mean, in an op-ed piece or something, you know, reference to that, that would be a deal.
If you want to come, like.
On the flyer, or what?
On, on the superintendent search thing, we're going to condense it. I don't know, you want to be there at 10:00? At the central office?
We're in between discussion items and executive session right now, so, just to remind everybody.
I, I asked.
That we fast forward to adjournment?
No, I asked for an executive session.
We have an executive session.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, for like, maybe five, 10 minutes.
Is there, is, is there a pressing personnel issue that?
I just would like to talk about something.
That requires an executive session, so.
Are we invited?
No, you guys can leave. The purpose is to discuss our meeting.
Is there a second?
Personnel issue.
Is there a second?
Second.